Launching into the next stage of the process, which is to do these presentations and evaluations in with the partnership of our professional staff from the Budget Office, with the partnership of our Director of the Office of Equity and Human Rights, who is back for this favorite part of public policy of his, here with our auditor and with our citizen advisors, including our new member of our citizen advisory panel, Frida Christopher, one of our new members. Dineshka may or may not be here this morning, but she'll be with us along the way. And, oh, come on up, please. You have literally a seat at the table. So, Dineshka Otero-Sarano is here as well. And along with our long-term partners on the panel, we appreciate you all very much putting a huge amount of time in with us as the council and collectively as a budget committee to deliberate on a really big part of what the city does. City budgets are how we express our values in real ways, because where you spend the money is what you mean is important. So, this is always, to me, a pretty important part of what we do in the course of our business during the year. And so, we're glad that you want to help. And welcome to our two new members. We're glad to have you here. So, with that, I will turn it over to Andrew to get us launched.
Great. Thank you, Mayor. So, we have, welcome to the first Budget Work Session. We will have four of them this year, two this week, and two coming up the last week of March. Actually, three, sorry, three coming up the last week of March. Today, we're going to talk about a few things. I'm going to give an overview of where we are in terms of the budget situation. I'm going to go pretty quickly through that, but a little bit in terms of the materials, forecast, and what we're going to do during these work sessions. And then, we're going to go right into the Citywide Asset Management Report. And that may push us a little bit beyond 9:30, but I think we've got some extra time built in for the three bureaus we're going to hear from today. We're going to hear from Portland Parks and Recreation, Portland Bureau of Transportation, and finally, the Office of Government Relations. Everyone should have a binder. If you don't, let me know, so we can get you that information. And in that binder is a lot of information. They're very unwieldy. This is the type of time of year where you can see the Budget Office carrying these around all the time and often dropping them and things spilling out. But what's inside of this is a number of things. There's some summary information, both including a cover memo and some other information about the decision package, packages that were both requested by bureaus and recommended by CBO. There's a Citywide Issues tab, which has information about bureau budgets over the last few years, Bureau FTE, et cetera. That's also where the Citywide Infrastructure Assets Report is going to be. And then, we have Bureau-by-Bureau tabs. And in each one of those, you have both the City Budget Office review of that bureau's budget, as well as the bureau's presentation materials that they'll be using in their presentation. So, if you don't have a seat where you can see the television, there, any materials they should use, they will use, should be in your binders already. In terms of the overall economic outlook, and council already knows this, but for benefit of the citizen advisors, we did issue a forecast update in February. That forecast update shows that our local economy is still growing very strong. And we have roughly $20 million, a little bit more than a $20 million surplus going into the fiscal year 1617. And that $20 million rough surplus is broken down into ongoing and one-time funds. It's $4.4 million of ongoing funding and $15.9 million of one-time. Now, those numbers will change before we finish the budget. We will issue a final forecast at the end of April, after we see business license taxes. Given current economic trends, we expect the forecast will get a little bit better, probably more one-time funding. And we're not really sure about ongoing funding at this point. And I can't tell you how much more, but unless things change dramatically, we expect to see that improve a little bit as well. Part of the reasons for this, we have very low inflation. Inflation over this last year came in at 0.3%, which is one of the lowest we've seen in years. Our labor contracts have a 1% floor, so that's what we built into the forecast in terms of wage growth, 1% for city employees. But again, it came in at 0.3%. Tax year 2015 overall looks like it's going to be another record year for business license taxes. So, that'll be the second record year in a row, which, as our economist says, you know, makes any economist who's doing forecasting very nervous. When you see one record, you get nervous. When you see two in a row, you get really nervous about what that means in terms of long-term. But again, revenues are coming in very strong. And as I mentioned, the final forecast will be out in April, and it is likely to show continued improvement. In terms of the overall recommendations that were made by the City Budget Office, in the Summary tab, there's a short cover memo that tries to capture just some of the big themes that are in this year's budget and in our budget reviews. And one of the things that I might just draw your attention to, again, around this forecast issue, on page two of that memo, there's a chart in there that, again, our city economists looked at Big Five general fund revenue over the last 15 years or so. And he broke it down per capita, right? So, this is saying, if we look at per capita revenue of our Big Five general fund sources, and just to remind people, those are property taxes, business license taxes, utility license taxes, transit lodging, which is our hotel motel tax, and then finally, state shared revenues. If you look at those, you'll see that that line sort of bumps around the $450 per capita for most of those 15 years. It drops below sometimes, it goes above sometimes, but it sort of fluctuates around that line. And in the last two years, it shot to well above $500 per capita. So, again, as we're going through this budget process, I think it's worth keeping in mind, we don't know where that line's going to go. It is possible that we are in sort of a new era, that Portland, I mean, it's a, we're operating very well economically, we're a very desirable place to live, people are moving here from all over the country, people are starting businesses. So, it's possible that we've turned a corner and that there's a new, you know, sort of per capita norm that we're going to see. My bet would be that's not the case, that this is an outlier, and that we will revert back to that more historical $450 or so per capita. But that's something we're going to be keeping an eye on as we go forward. And I think the other economic trend to note is that an economic slowdown is going to come, whether it's going to come in the next 24 months or the next, you know, four or five years, we don't know. But we are already in a very long expansion, and we will see an economic slowdown. What we hope is that economic slowdown is moderate and can be managed. But that is something that's going to be coming. And so, again, as we go through these budget decisions and talk about sort of the surplus funds, I think keeping those larger trends in mind is important. At a very high level, and we're going to get into the details on each one of these bureaus, so I won't, I won't go through them right now. But the City Budget Office, we have recommended allocating out that roughly $20 million surplus to a variety of programs. Housing, we've recommended about $3.7 million of additional one-time resources. Police, we've added, recommended about $2 million of ongoing ads, but we've also recommended an offset with the school resource officers, which will be a conversation when we get to police. We have recommended adding the 13 firefighters and fire. We've recommended about $600,000 in Boeck for trainee positions to deal with some of their staffing needs. In parks, we've recommended about $3.8 million of ads, but then offset that with about $1.5 million of reductions to help pay for some of those. So, a net add ongoing in parks of about $2.2 million. And then, in terms of some other things throughout, we've recommended some additional, about $1 million of major maintenance funding for radios. Again, this is a long-term asset need that we're going to need to take care of. We've recommended a $1.4 million ongoing capital set-aside. So, this would be in addition to the infrastructure one-time dollars that council has set aside by policy to add a new ongoing set-aside every year to take care of some of those assets. We've also recommended $1.6 million for a levy assessment. This is one of those things that kind of hit the city, it was a little bit of a surprise a couple of years ago, but again, we have a levy that we're responsible for, not, sorry, we're not responsible for, but with a joint coalition are responsible for. And we're working with those other governments, but our share of that cost would be about $1.6 million. And then, there are a number of smaller adds and reductions as we go through all the different bureaus. And you can see those in the decision package summaries that are in your binder. And I think, given where we are going, where we are economically in terms of very positive place, but where we are going, which of course, we don't know, but there's always that concern about a downturn, you know, CBO's overall recommendation, both to council and the citizen advisors, is to really add ongoing costs and programs very sparingly. Those per capita tax rates may fall back, the economic slowdown may hit, and all of the ongoing costs that we add today with the surplus today are most likely going to result in some sort of reduction in a future year. And so, I think just keeping that in mind, that there are a lot of things we recommended for, but those will likely either need to go away or require an offset somewhere else in the city in some future year, maybe next year, maybe a few years from now. But I think keeping that dynamic in mind is going to be important.
Have you included my, one of my favorite tables, just for getting your head around the scale of the work and where we are, which is your FTE chart over time?
Yeah. So, in the Citywide Issues tab, it should be, I think, the third, fourth chart in that tab, percent change in number of positions going back to 2008, '09 to 1516. So, it's in the Citywide Issues tab, and there are four tables there.
Yeah. I think that's good. You also have expressed it as a year-by-year table.
So, right on the, on the, yeah, on the backside is the data.
Yeah. I think this is just, when we think about, Frida and I were talking about this earlier, I mean, she's been very familiar with school district budgets. Ours are, of course, different, but in both cases, human resources, people are a major cost driver. How many police officers, how many firefighters, how many parks employees, and of course, what we pay them also affects this. But, you know, a big cost of doing business for us is salaries. I mean, yes, we buy asphalt and trucks and police cars and so on, and build bridges and water lines. But there's, you know, there's some, to me, some merit in seeing what's happened to the city's population over time, what's happened to the workload of these bureaus, and how big is the workforce compared to five years ago, 10 years ago. So, I particularly find that useful as grounding. Doesn't necessarily change this year's budget decision that much, but it's good grounding.
And all four of those, we have FTE, and then we also have some of the other charts look at overall discretionary changes, changes in where the general fund budget goes over time as well. Again, trying to give some of that bigger context for grounding.
Andrew, what's the magic of the timeframe you've chosen, 809 to 1516?
So, there is no magic. And it is important to note, because the timeframe you use will obviously show, you know, a difference in terms of how you chart it. 08, '09 adopted budget was adopted before the recession had a major impact on the city. So, it was really fall of 2008 after that budget was adopted. So, I think you could see this as a high-water mark. And when you look at the total FTEs, you know, 6,035, we still today are about 200 below, below that mark, which is partially resource-related, but I think it's also partially efficiencies. And we've learned how to do certain things better and with fewer resources. But, you know, to the extent we kept the same timeframe next year, you know, you're starting at a lower, at a lower point.
Andrew, if I can go back to your chart on page two. Three questions, if you don't know the answers at this point. Is there an optimum number that balances the city's revenue versus the, for better term, stifling of growth? That's the first question. Number two, can you attribute that rise from 450 to 500 to a single item? Or is it a mixture of all three? And lastly, if you were to extract the state shared revenue from your total graph, would the trend of the line look the same?
I'll start with the third one. Yes. State shared revenue is a pretty small portion. We do count it in our Big Five, but I think it's only about $15 million. Yeah. It's about $15 million, you know, compared to property taxes, which are, you know, a couple hundred million. So, it's a distant fifth. So, yes, I think the trend would stay the same. In terms of the first question, that, it's, it's, there is no optimum number. I will tell you that budget people, we search for that optimum number, and I talked to a lot of colleagues in other cities. And I think that the answer is, it's going to vary place to place. Different, you know, different cities have different, different levels of taxation that they're willing to bear. And I think the key question for our city council, but for all the governments, right, schools, county, et cetera, is, you know, where are we in terms of that? And there are a lot of funding measures that are going to go out, you know, over the next couple of years, some from the city, some from the school district, some from other places. And, you know, Portlanders are relatively generous compared to a lot of other jurisdictions in terms of their willingness to pass some of those tax measures. I think what you're seeing here is not necessarily, this is not measure-driven, this is economic-driven, right? And so, I guess this gets to your second question, is there a single item? There's not a single item, although business license tax is the main driver. Again, we've gone from roughly $82 million to potentially this year exceeding $110 million in a very short, you know, two-to-three-year time period in business license tax. So, that's a huge growth. But at the same time, property taxes, as we've come out of the recession, unwinding some of the compression and, you know, seeing that growth, that's also driven that number up. I think I got all three, didn't I? All right. The last thing before we jump into assets that I'll just draw your attention to are the performance dashboards. And what you're going to see for every session are these large, and we tried to put them on big sheets of paper, so they're easy to read and easy to refer to. But every one of these sessions will bring the performance dashboard for the bureaus that you're going to be hearing from that in that particular day. And these are, you're going to have hard copies. These dashboards are also posted online. And the goal here is to give that quick reference in terms of how the bureau's performing on its key performance measures. And as you'll recall, over the last couple of years, we've worked with bureaus to develop, either if they had key performance measures already, just to take those and elevate them and make them more visible, and for bureaus that didn't have key performance measures, to really, to develop those and make sure that we're tracking against some of what their key outcomes are. And that is what those KPMs are intended to measure, are the outcomes of what the bureau's core services are. And these dashboards are intended to provide information, again, to the citizens and council that's really going to guide your decision-making as we go through this process. And specifically today, and in these work sessions, guide your decisions on the impacts, guide your thinking about the impacts of budget decisions that we're going to be looking at. And you'll see that what bureaus have done is they've said, here's what we can do with our base budget, and here's what we could do with our requested budget. And so, the hope is that we can actually have some real conversation about that in terms of how these budget decisions, whether they're either adds or cuts, are going to impact the bureau's ability to get things done. And then, the other thing you'll see that's new this year is that bureaus have provided long-term strategic targets for every key performance measure that's on these. And so, if you look at the detailed charts below, you'll see those targets and what their goals are. And they've tried to align those goals to a city or a bureau strategic plan. So, either their own internal strategic plan, or if there's a larger goal, and say, the Portland Plan, or the Comp Plan, or something along those lines, trying to make sure those things are aligned. With that, are there any questions before we jump into asset management presentation?
Quick tutorial for our budget advisors. Understand that, in particular, if you look at that chart where there's this giant growth in percentage for Portland Development Commission and Bureau of Environmental Services, that as we work our way through these budgets, there are multiple layers. Most of PDC's budget is tax increment, but they get a little bit of general fund for economic development functions outside of tax increment districts. BES is mostly funded by ratepayer dollars, but there are some functions that are assigned to BES that can only properly be paid for with the general fund. So, these percentage graphs are interesting and helpful, but they're not necessarily, they're not fully illustrative of what's actually going on in that bureau. In fact, the PDC shrunk by about 30% in terms of workforce during that time. So, actually, what the city council over those years, for us, and while I've been here as well, have been sort of making up for the loss of general fund. And BES, this council's been assiduous in making sure that the general fund is paying for things in BES that it should pay for, and that ratepayer dollars were paying for things that they should pay for. And so, that's one reason for that growth. So, there's policy and politics behind some of these numbers, but there's also this overlapping of how they're funded.
I suspect there's probably something to be explained in every one of these bar charts. Parks reminded me about a levy backfill that put theirs in. The Commissioner of Public Affairs seems to be vastly overspending his budget. There's reasons that his has, you know, that Commissioner Saltzman took on the children's levy and various other things. So, it's, there's, I think, a story behind each one of these charts.
Yeah. I think that's right. And that is always the danger with these high-level contextual things, is there, as you both said, there is a lot of detail behind that. And we'll be happy to unpack any of that, either here or if we need to go back. If someone has a specific question, we can walk through exactly sort of what happened in those years and explain it. But most of the times when you see huge jumps or huge decreases, there's some sort of policy decision behind it, driving it. Okay. Let's jump into the asset management. So, in the Citywide Issues tab, you have behind these charts that the mayor was just referring to, you have a PowerPoint presentation, Citywide Infrastructure and Investment Needs. We'll put that up on the big screen, but you have it in front of you as well. And we're joined today in the audience by a number of both bureau directors and asset managers from our large infrastructure bureaus. So, from Water, from the Bureau of Environmental Services, Parks, Bureau of Transportation, and OMF. We were also going to be joined today by Susan Anderson, who was going to jointly do this presentation, but she is ill and was not able to make it today. So, she sends her regards. So, I will fly solo on this. And I'm going to go pretty quickly through this, so we have time for some questions at the end, and then we can move on to some of the bureaus as well. So, a lot of these slides are to provide some context. Feel free to stop me at any point if I am going too quickly through them or you have any follow-up questions. But I will try and cruise through this pretty quickly. So, in terms of asset management, one of the reasons why we do this session at the beginning of the work sessions is, over the next few weeks, you're going to weigh a lot of competing service-level decisions for 201617, a lot of these budget decisions. And what we're trying to do in this presentation is a couple of things. One, provide evidence of where the city's had success in prioritizing and implementing reinvestment in our capital assets, because I think we really have had success over the last few years, and we are continuing to have that success now. And I think it's worth highlighting that. At the same time, decisions have been made during the recession and afterwards that sometimes preserve current service levels, those on-the-ground frontline service levels, by allowing our assets to deteriorate. And that's the trade-off as we go through a budget process that's important to keep in mind. And we will not really highlight that trade-off, because it does impact the livability. We often focus on preserving those services now, because that impacts the livability of current citizens. But by allowing the assets to deteriorate, it affects the livability of our future residents. And so, again, that trade-off is an important one as we have these budget conversations. As we go through today, I'm going to give a brief overview of the 2015 statistics around asset management, and talk about our asset management practices in the city of Portland. We're going to talk about how bureaus have incorporated resiliency into their planning process, and some options for investing in overall infrastructure.
We just asked to get the slideshow up there.
Great. Great. So, in terms of slide three, you know, talking about robust asset management practices in the city, we've made some excellent progress in increasing our asset management capacity both within and across bureaus. I think for a long time, we've had some bureaus who are really good at managing their assets, and some bureaus who are catching up. And over the last couple of years, there's been a huge amount of information sharing among the professionals in those bureaus. And I think that's beginning to make, you know, a real difference. And we're bringing up sort of that asset management ability in all of our bureaus across the city. The City Budget Office also convenes the Citywide Asset Managers Group, so they get together every couple of months to talk through a lot of these issues. And I think, again, we're seeing some of that professional knowledge sharing as well. CBO is continuing to make improvements in our capital set-aside validation process. So, also in your binders, in the, behind the summary section, so right behind sort of the cover memo, you'll see, and we're going to talk about it as we go through all the bureaus, there's an infrastructure project ranking summary sheet. What that shows is we got 23 projects submitted by bureaus. We send those through a validation process. The bureaus rank them in terms of their overall risk and likelihood of failure. Asset managers from throughout the city get together to validate those scores. And you can see, again, how they scored overall on a citywide basis on that chart. And we've continued to make improvements, again, relying on the professional expertise that already exists in the bureaus in terms of that overall process. And I think, finally, the thing to mention in terms of asset management practices is council support and attention to the asset management needs over the last few years. It's really translated to some major successes. Again, renewing that one-time capital set-aside, we've seen some positive outcomes from that, ensuring that Parks' operations and maintenance, that Parks is getting operations and maintenance for new assets, like the Conemux Park, which is pictured there on the slide. The Parks Bond, which went to voters and potentially other things, you know, the gas tax will have an impact on our ability to maintain transportation infrastructure as well. Overall, asset value in the city on slide four, we have about $34.7 billion of total assets. You can see how that breaks down. Sewer and stormwater is by far the largest at about $13.5 billion. Transportation's second at just under $10 billion. Water at about $8 billion, and then followed by our civic assets, Parks, civic assets and Parks as well. And what this $37.4 billion represents is the replacement value of city assets. And I think it's really worth noting that this is the result of generations of investments. Some of the assets we're talking about that are counted here are things that were paid for by taxpayers 100 years ago, when they set aside, you know, Parks land, or, you know, made investments in infrastructure that we may still be using. The next slide, and this is one you see every year, talks about asset condition by bureau. And of that $37 billion, we break that down by bureau. And each bureau then looks at the asset condition and ranks it in terms of very good condition, good, fair, poor, very poor, or to be determined. And to be determined means they still need some work to figure out exactly where it should, it should rank on there. Looking at 2015, 72% of the city's assets are in fair or better condition, and about 19% or about a fifth are in poor or very poor condition. And of that $7 billion, so, again, that 19% equates to about $7 billion that are in poor or very poor condition, of that approximately $4 billion are in transportation. What we show on the following slide then is how that asset condition translates into a funding gap for those bureaus. And so, slide six, what it tries to say is, what would be needed to avoid deterioration of our existing assets? And again, the bureaus go through and do this. And looking at transportation, by far, is the largest in terms of the annual funding gap. The other bureaus do estimates as well. $268 million is the current estimate from bureaus in terms of what they'd need to avoid deterioration of existing assets. Last year, that funding gap was about $242 million. So, again, it is climbing. Some of that is deterioration of assets. Some of that's also the way that bureaus are, again, every year, they do a little bit better job classifying and figuring out, you know, exactly what condition their assets are in. It's worth noting that that $268 million does not include about $130 million in capacity gap. So, the capacity gap is what bureaus look at when they say, where are we not providing, where are there existing inequities or deficiencies in service levels for our current customers and citizens? Classic example here that we talk about every year, Parks in East Portland. There are fewer of them, there are fewer residents that live within a half-mile of a park in East Portland. That's a capacity gap. And again, bureaus estimate that's about $130 million to address that, address that capacity gap. And of that, transportation, again, is a very large share, about $75 million per year for the next 20 years to deal with some of those transportation gaps. I think these numbers are really daunting. And one of the things that, when we've talked about this in past years, we haven't sort of taken that next step to say, what can we do? We look at these numbers, and they're really huge. And I think it's important to note that we can identify, work towards some solutions. One of the things we can do is identify the most cost-effective uses of the maintenance money that we do have. So, bureaus do have maintenance funding, even our general fund bureaus do, and really making sure that they're targeting that towards the assets that most need it. And then, two, continuing to develop practical mechanisms for setting aside more funding. And we've got those a few slides later on. But council's taken some action. I think there's some additional things we can do to begin to make progress against these, you know, against these large annual funding gaps.
Commissioner Ovek, if the gas tax passes, how much will that address the $179 million deficit in transportation?
Well, we're allocating about $8 million a year to street repairs, and another eight, eight and a half, and another six, six and a half to safety projects. So, I think it's about an $8 million reduction in that amount.
So, proportionally, probably that, similar to the Parks being the only one that shows a positive change from 2014 because of the Parks Bond. It's about the same, kind of a nice bite out of the need, but not the whole thing.
Well, actually, I'll have Leah confirm this, but I think that we will only, we will slow the bleeding, but we won't stop it. So, that number unfortunately might continue to go up even with that additional money.
On the next few slides, and I'm going to go through these quickly, but they discuss sort of asset management more generally, and get into specifics of some of the asset management practices in our bureaus. We have included this information, again, to make sure that we highlight some of the good work that's going on there. But the goal of asset management overall, it's, you know, to identify cost-effective actions that reduce risk and meet levels of service. And those are the three, those are the three components that come into play when we're talking about managing Portland's infrastructure. You know, what's the level of service being provided? What's the risk of asset failure? And what's the funding source and availability to deal with some of those issues? An example of level of service on slide eight is street maintenance. And I think council's pretty familiar with this. What we tried to show here on this, on this slide is the Portland, you know, Bureau of Transportation, they have a goal of maintaining 80% of arterial and collector streets in fair or better condition, with no more than 2% in very poor condition. But as we all know, that's not the current state of our streets. Currently, about 55% are in fair or better condition, and 45% are in poor or very poor condition. And as I noted, the estimated cost for bringing the streets up to desired service levels is about $74 million a year for the, for the. is about $74 million a year for the next 10 years. But by setting the goals, transportation's done an important thing and said, you know, we now know what that gap is. And I think if you go back years, you know, 10 or 15 years, you know, we knew there was deteriorating infrastructure, but maybe didn't have that same level of sophistication in terms of exactly where we were and what was needed to get there. And that's why this process every year is hopefully getting some more information along those lines. The next slide, again, council's very familiar with this. It just talks about, you know, it's obviously a lot cheaper to repair a street in good condition and bring it back up to the nearest street that's in very poor or failed condition.
Andrew, can I interrupt you for a public service announcement on that point, which is we get calls a lot from people saying, why are you fixing X Street near me when Y Street four blocks away is in worse shape? So, you have to explain over and over again, which you can't afford to fix all of the streets. You need to spend the limited resources you have for the most part preventing streets that are not so bad yet from getting worse.
You know, in terms of one of those criteria, when talking about infrastructure assets is assessing the risk and, you know, risk is that combination of two failures. It's the consequence of an asset failure and the likelihood that the asset will fail. And, you know, consequences of some asset failures can be relatively minor, maybe a two-hour water shut-off on a residential street, but other consequences can be really significant, even, you know, including loss of life. And then likelihood is exactly what it sounds like, you know, how likely is it? Our bureaus do a really good job of looking at these things, looking at the likelihood, looking at the consequence. And it's those things that show up in the high and extreme risk category that they're going to focus their resources on for the most part and that, you know, that's appropriate. Because, again, what asset managers in our bureaus are trying to do is reduce the most risk with those available resources. And, you know, by actively managing that risk, Portland's bureaus, you know, we strive to maintain, to minimize service interruptions and the effects they're going to have on the community. And then some additional, you know, bureau examples of what's going on in terms of risk assessment. You know, you can see on this slide, you know, in Parks, this is a closed asset in Glenwood Park that's awaiting repairs. And, you know, obviously, that's something we want to avoid. One of the things that Parks is doing is they're beginning a playground condition assessment this spring of 2016 to really look at the risk of aging playground structures around the city and systematically evaluate them and use those to rank their major maintenance investments in coming years. They're going to also include equity impacts into that as a component of that assessment. And underserved neighborhoods are going to receive preference where risk status, where asset risk status may be the same between two neighborhoods. And again, what that photo shows is Whirl and Glenwood Park that's awaiting repairs and clearly the type of underinvestment that we want to avoid in terms of shutting down those assets. On the right side is a picture of the Portland Building. We're actually not talking about Portland Building reconstruction here, but we're talking about what Facilities is going to do after that reconstruction is done. And they have a new strategic planning and development team that's really, over the next year, is going to formalize an asset management program for those OMF-owned buildings and include a long-term maintenance plan for the Portland Building. So, again, we can keep that structure up and maintain that investment we're going to be making over the next few years. In terms of the Bureau of Environmental Services, Slide 12 talks about both BS and Water, you know, have very mature asset management programs. They invest their capital operating dollars in risk reduction. BS has recently been investing between $40 and $60 million per year in rebuilding and repairing infrastructure to reduce that risk of failure of aging assets. What this image shows are sanitary sewer pipes that have been repaired or rebuilt in the last five years. Those show up in red and in the last 10 years, they show up in orange. And obviously, the work that BS is doing there reduces the risk of sewage releases, road failures, overbroken pipes and overall service disruptions. Portland Water Bureau has done a really good job incorporating risk management into their overall performance reporting and they've actually incorporated directly into one of their key performance measures, which is reporting the percent of identified high-risk assets addressed. And you will see that on Water Bureau's dashboard when they present. And, you know, Water Bureau assesses that risk of failure, you know, on an ongoing basis and assigns each high-risk asset a management plan based on the cost and risk level that was shown on that chart a couple of slides ago. And last year, 64% of Water's high-level risks were addressed, 27% have planned mitigations and 9% of risks will be managed as mitigation, it's been determined is too expensive or not possible. And we really, you know, talking to Water about this, we really think that Water's use of risk assessment and performance reporting could become and really probably should become a model for other bureaus and other infrastructure bureaus that are doing this work. The next couple of slides talk a little bit about resiliency and we did want to highlight some of the work going on there because our infrastructure bureaus have taken a lot of steps in terms of resiliency planning. And, you know, efforts include projects like Water Bureau's seismic risk study, which we and the Plan and Development Directors have gotten a presentation on and it's, they're doing a lot of really good work in terms of that overall seismic risk. Bureau continuity of operation plans, what to do in the case of emergencies and natural disasters, natural hazard mitigation plan update, and then projects that are implementing actions from the climate change preparation strategy. All of these are focused on resiliency and trying to improve the city's resiliency. And then, another example from the Bureau of Environmental Services is how the investments in gray and green infrastructure have improved resiliency and reduced the risks from flooding and landslides. And, you know, we can really see that in terms of a very recent event, back between December 5th and 12th, we had record-breaking rainfall in the city for December. And those investments in the sewer system and the wastewater treatment plants and green infrastructure reduced the impact on citizens during that storm. Very specifically, the Columbia Boulevard Treatment Plant treated record-breaking flows and performed well under those extreme conditions. The green infrastructure and floodplain storage along Johnson Creek Basin, you know, helped reduce the impacts to home and businesses in that area from Johnson Creek flooding. And finally, quick responses to asset failure, and this was actually Parks, the picture on the right there, in terms of Parks' response to a Culver blowout on Wildwood Trail, again, helped reduce the impact of the overall flooding. So, we're seeing the positive impacts of that resiliency planning that our bureaus are In terms of investing overall in infrastructure, we've talked about what bureaus are doing to make those smart and well-prioritized investments, but, you know, more work does need to be done to address those funding gaps. And funding, you know, the infrastructure is critical to maintaining those levels of service over the long term. But again, it's difficult to prioritize maintenance and repair in the face of frontline cuts to services. What we talk about over the next slide, when we talk about these solutions, it's important to note, it hasn't been a short-term thing that got us here. It's not just the last few years, it's decades. Decades of underinvestment in the infrastructure, both because of decisions that were made, but also because of lack of funding and the inability to sort of, to have the adequate funding needed to invest in that infrastructure. Because it's been so long, it's going to take a long time to get out of this as well. There's no silver bullet, there's nothing we can do to fix that funding gap in the short term, but I think there are steps that we can take over multiple budget cycles that are going to help. And what we have here on Slide 17 shows the actions that have already been taken and some suggested actions moving into the future. You asked us a couple of years ago to put together a report that outlined some options for funding and allocating resources to major maintenance and replacement. And you may remember this chart from last year and I think the year before, but what we came to you with was a list of things that we suggested could be done. What you see in green there are the things that already have been done. We did increase the general fund allocation back in 2014, the one-time allocation for major maintenance projects. We continue to pursue new revenues for P-Bot with the gas tax. We got a voter-approved Parks Bond, which as Commissioner Fritz notes, is helping to reduce some of that gap. Council made policy revisions to reestablish the general fund capital set-aside using one-time dollars and then also to look at using the PSSRP funding moving forward as well. And we've debt-financed fueling station infrastructure improvements which were needed throughout the city. Talking about what's coming up and some of the options still on the table, we've talked to you before about developing ongoing general fund target adjustments. What this says is to our general fund bureaus in particular, what kind of current appropriation level target adjustments would they need to, again, maintain their existing assets? And Parks has done a lot of work in that area, some of the other general fund bureaus have started doing that work. Once we know that information, we can come back and put those decisions on the table in front of you so you have something to actually weigh. It's not just a, well, we know that there's a lot of money needed, we can actually say, here is the amount needed and we can start chipping away at that. Increasing the capital set-aside allocation using available PSSRP funding, this is a project that successfully implemented a number of public safety IT projects, technology projects, and there's some ongoing funding from that that council can decide what to do with, but one thing you may decide to do is go ahead and put that into a capital set-aside. We can also talk about incremental internal service fund rate increases. This would help with some of our, these aren't general fund-supported, but these are some of our OMF assets that are under-invested and asking bureaus to pay more, to pay really the full cost of service for those assets. And then, again, continue and develop those lifecycle maintenance investment approaches we're talking about, the gas tax is on there again, and then using those asset management concepts so that the investments we make are the best that we can do. Let me wrap up just by talking about, reminding you again, sort of, you know, talking again about how the steps we've taken, you know, over the last few years. You directed bureaus and the budget office to think about and propose strategies to make progress and address the funding gaps and you've taken action on several of those. We're continuing to learn from each other, bureaus are continuing to learn from each other and share those best practices across bureaus to improve that asset management capacity. And finally, we need to adequately fund the major maintenance and repair and do everything we can to start bridging that funding gap to ensure that citizens now continue to experience those assets and use those assets, but also our future residents will be able to experience them as well. And that's going to involve potentially some funding decisions as we go forward. So, let me wrap up with that and see if there are any questions. And I'll remind you that all the infrastructure bureaus are here, so if you have specific questions about any of their, the information here, they're happy to come up and talk to you as well.
Opening questions on overview.
Andrew, I have a philosophical question. This is an excellent presentation at a high level, but the one area it, I think, it sort of gives short shrift is the area that's out of our control, which is, it's shifting ground on federal and state regulations that impact investment decisions. And I would point to just that, you know, estimated $2 billion in unfunded mandates over the last 15 years that we've done just in the utilities. So, to what extent does the regulatory environment complicate what we're trying to do? And just, I mean, the obvious answer is if we're told we have to decommission reservoirs or told we have to do a big pipe or told we have to do a resilience project, obviously that goes to the front of the line. But the consequence of going to the front of the line is that someone else has changed our priorities unless we have the capacity just to indefinitely pass on the cost to our customers, which of course, we don't. So, you want to just comment a little bit about how the regulatory environment complicates this more rational system of asset management?
I'm actually not sure I can say it better than you just did, but I think that that's exactly right. And to the extent that we have to make those investments, it does take away from what we might see. And I think, you know, and I would let the utility bureaus in particular, if they wanted to address it more, if they, as they do their risk assessment and they look at the things they want to take care of, a federal regulatory requirement trumps that. And so, you know, something that they would have rather spent that money on now, you know, has to wait. It falls further behind and potentially presents more risk. The other thing I would note, when you talk about that federal impact, is the reduction in federal funding that we've seen, and I think that's particularly true in transportation. But, you know, if you go back, you know, 20 or 30 years, a lot of these asset repairs were being paid for with federal funds and that's not the case any longer. We're having to make up for that locally.
I mean, I'll just use the example that we talk a lot about. We built the big, we, Commissioner Saltzman, Congressman Blumenauer, this council, going back over a long time, we collectively built the big pipe. The big pipe was built to cover 93% of the anticipated problem, meaning it wasn't built assuming there was a 100-year event every year. And the difference in cost was probably a difference in 1-point-something billion and a factor of that. Well, so, but again, a lot of that was beyond our control, so the utilities invest a lot of money in doing the big pipe. Laudable goal, we all want to see clean rivers, but to what extent did that bump other infrastructure needs like replacing pipes because there's a point at which you just, you know, you can't keep piling on? So, just, it's an interesting question and we're going to have it with the levies because we're not sure where the government's going to land on the levies. There's always an ongoing discussion about water quality. We're the only system in the country that has a pass on having to treat our water. The moment that changes, we're right back, Commissioner Fritz, to having a discussion about UV versus filtration versus other things, big-ticket items. So, it is, it is an important piece, it's just it's the one we probably control the least.
Should proceed and head into Bureau presentation, Andrew, sir. So, our first up is Parks. So, Mr. Batte and Sein, come on up.
Good morning.
Andrew, you want them to go first?
Yeah, sorry.
So, go ahead, Mike, and take it away and then we'll hear from the budget office with their recommendations.
Point up.
Okay.
But I'll start. Good morning, Mayor, Commissioners, members of the Citywide Budget Advisory Committee. My name's Michael Batte, I'm the Director of Portland Parks and Recreation. And it is my great honor and pleasure to kick off the budget presentations this year and for Parks to kick that off and to express to the council first and foremost that the entire bureau is grateful for your support, your steadfast support over the years and particularly as the economy's improved over the last several years. You've shown time after time that you believe that Parks and Recreation is a key part of the livability of Portland and a vibrant park system is one of our hallmarks. So, thank you for that. I'm joined today by Jeff Schaefer, who's going to be, he's moving this direction as we speak and who's our Finance Manager, and also Judy Bluehorse-Skelton, who serves on our Parks Board but is also the Chair of the Parks Board. And I'll talk a little bit more about the role of the Parks Board in the presentation today.
You mean Parks Budget Advisory Committee?
I'm sorry, the Parks, the Budget Advisory Committee, yes. Also want to thank our senior management team, our own, the extensive Budget Advisory Committee members and particularly our labor partners, all of whom gave their time and talent to submit, prepare the budget that we submitted. So, let's see, great. You know, though budgets fluctuate every year, the bureau is guided by some very, very important plans and policies. And so, a few of them are shown on the screen, the Parks 2020 Vision, which was adopted in 2001. This is our long-term planning document. And by the way, it's 2016, so that means that in the next couple of years, we'll need to begin another 20- to 30-year look out into the future about what is the future of Portland Parks beyond 2020. We break our long-term plan into incremental strategic plans and so you see the 2012- to 2015 strategic plan. It provides really specific actions in a short-term period and allows that flexibility to a changing environment. We also produce, and this is an example of the 2014 Annual Performance Report, that is a data-driven assessment of our progress towards those goals. And also, I'd like to recognize that these are just the Parks plans. We're also intimately involved in citywide major plans like the Portland Plan, for example, the COP Plan, the Citywide Equity Initiative, and also the Climate Action Plan, we're key players in that as well. You know, we're a bureau with incredible depth and breadth in our service to Portlanders, 144 developed parks, over 1,500 acres, about 8,000 acres of natural areas, 14 community and art centers, 13 pools and other assorted facilities, 1.2 million trees, including 230,000 street trees, our urban forestry group is responsible for those, and 50 community gardens with over 2,000 individual plots around the city. We have the world's, or not the world's, but the largest forested park in North America. We have the world's smallest park. We have steam locomotives and we have a motorsports racetrack, just to give a little bit of a perspective on the diversity of facilities. But Portland Parks and Recreation is much more than a number of places, as spectacular as they are. We're really about programs and most importantly, about the people that we serve. Last year, we provided 35,000 swim lessons, ensuring that young people could be safe in the water. Nearly 320,000 people attended free movies and concerts and summer playgrounds in last summer, summer free-for-all. Hundreds of thousands served by our various recreation programs. Nearly 320,000 people attended free movies and concerts and summer playgrounds in last summer's Summer Free-for-All. Hundreds of thousands served by our various recreation programs, including our city's youth. In fact, thanks to council's investment in the teen programming pilot, we saw 2,400 youth passes issued last summer that allowed 2,400 young people to get into our community centers for free, resulting in 1,200 doing activities just at Matt Dishman Community Center alone every single day. 1,200 teens. Many of them were there all day long. Speaking of teens, Parks is the biggest employer of teens and youth in the city. For example, we hire nearly 700 lifeguards every year. Those are, tend to be high school and college-age students. And last year, nearly 1,000 teens who developed life and work skills in various programs of Portland Parks and Recreation, including the Junior Lifeguard, the Recreation Leader, the Eagle Golf Program, and our Grunt and Youth Conservation Crew programs. So we just discussed sort of the breadth of PPNR, but I want to talk a little bit, just take a snapshot about something that's extremely current, and I think, as, this is my opportunity to address the council on a broad variety of issues. I want everyone to know that over the past year, we've been, and actually several years, been thinking about how can we organize ourselves most effectively. And over the past year, our team has been working together to assess our current organizational structure and consider alternatives that will allow us to be more effective moving forward. So effective, actually, turns out it's today. March 15th, we began operating under a new organizational structure that you see on the slide before you. The reorg was intentionally designed to be budget-neutral. No existing positions have been eliminated nor are required to make this reorganization happen. And it really is designed to accomplish four primary objectives. First, to increase our focus on sustainable landscapes. As I mentioned, we manage over 11,000 acres of land. How can we do that in the most ecologically effective and protected way possible? Number two, how can we provide greater emphasis to our recreation programs, especially for youth? Number three, it will expand our equity and inclusion efforts. And number four, it recognizes the importance of urban forestry as a key part of the services that we deliver to Portlanders. And by the way, for anyone who's here, I'm happy to do another briefing and go into more detail on reorg at some point in the future at your convenience. So back to the budget process. As the Commissioner mentioned, we had a Budget Advisory Committee. 30 people served on that, 15 members of the Parks Board, 12 members of community organizations, and our three labor reps. We also had a public, our own public budget meeting where over 100 Portlanders participated. We reached out to Hacienda CDC and worked with them to host a listening session with many residents in attendance discussing their priorities. And then we tried something new and did a community survey, and over 2,400 Portlanders participated in those community surveys. Out of those meetings, seven fundamental budget values were set as the lens to look through and evaluate as the Bureau developed our budget proposals. You can find all the budget values in that right column on the slide, but I want to call your attention to a few. First of all, just equitable service. Our goal is to provide equitable service in a park system and geography that is historically inequitable. Our drive is to become more fair, more equal, more equitable, build parks and programs in previously underserved areas and communities that, that desire to do that, to reach out, creates an inherent budgetary tension with the need to take care of what we have. And if you, you've heard both sides of those, and the fact is, it isn't choosing between one, it's deciding that we have to do both. So with that tension of protecting our assets and equitable service delivery, we're always looking to leverage partnerships. That's another budget value. We maximize our ability to provide service through partnerships, investments from donors, sponsors, and grantmakers. Importantly, revenue generation is an important part of our budget mix as well. I have these budget values, but I'll also say that as we looked at this year's budget, particularly as we looked at reductions, we recognized, and the Budget Advisory Committee recognized, that we couldn't, we wouldn't be able to hold true to all of those budget values while submitting this budget, but we did try to live within as many of those as possible. So we just discussed the values that guided us, but with 40 budget proposals, we chose to present them to you broken down into key significant issues or theme areas. These issues are providing living wage jobs for valued Parks employees, ensuring access for all Portlanders, providing safe places for the public and employees, protecting the public's investments in our park assets, and finally, developing partnerships and collecting fees that maximize the service that we deliver. So the first one, provide living wage jobs, and as Director Scott talked about in his discussion about the budget outlook, this is certainly a big issue for the council and the city. And that's the issue that, in this year's budget, we are putting together a package that brings us into compliance with an arbitrator's ruling on seasonal employees performing bargaining unit work. After months of hard work by both labor and management, a settlement agreement was recently approved by council that will cost roughly $4.4 million to maintain current service levels. This shows up in our budget as Package PK1. As a result of the settlement, we'll be implementing much clearer distinctions between work done by casual employees and work done by bargaining employees. These changes affect recreation work spanning community centers, summer camps, pools, summer free-for-all, our customer service center, inclusion services, and others. It's a big impact. Maintaining our current service level can be accomplished by converting and consolidating work done by, in the past, casual employees into living wage union jobs. And it's going to be about 130 positions is our estimate. If full funding is not available, then we would probably need some type of one-time bridge funding to bridge the timeline to implement a reduced service level. Implementing service reductions in recreation is a fairly complicated matter. Partly, it's complicated by the fact that we put a heavy reliance on program revenue and the tight integration between our basic recreation operations and multiple recreation programs that are supported by those revenues. In other words, a community center like Southwest Community Center, which receives actually very little general fund support, they have a general operating budget for keeping the doors open in the pool and the front desk staffed 105 hours a week. With that foundation of staffing, other classes and programs are able to be provided. But at some smaller sites, it would be challenging to pull out one specific program or reduce hours of operation without compromising the integrity of the entire operation, because each community center is run like a business. A good example of this complexity is the preschool program. While more discreet than any other recreation activities, eliminating preschool as a program would likely trigger the closure of two to three community centers that are anchored by their preschool programs. And until this arbitrator's ruling, our preschool programs have been self-sufficient. They've covered their own costs. So for example, Sellwood Community Center and Hillside Community Centers depend to a great deal on those preschool programs. It's also worth noting that our preschool programs are greatly appreciated by hundreds of Portland families. They have indirect benefits, including activation of our community centers during off-peak hours when we have capacity, and they fill a gap between head-start programs and more expensive for-profit preschools. Under the scenario in which council funds full, ongoing funding of this arbitration package, the 4.4 million, we have until October 1st, 2016, to redesign the staffing and consolidate work into bargaining unit positions. This includes running recruitments for staff and filling positions in order to be in compliance by October 1st. But under the scenario that PPNR somehow gets less than that full funding, we'll have to do all of that same work, redesigning staffing, consolidating work by October 1st, but we'll also have to simultaneously decide what programming work we'll need to stop doing, and in some cases, what facilities we would need to close. Because we don't expect funding decisions from this process until June, we've already had to begin our summer programming, work, registration, customer sign-ups, those typical things. Additionally, staff are being hired as we speak, making employment commitments. Therefore, if we are to receive less than the full package, we would request that if the council would give us one-time bridge funding to get through this summer and the commitments in programs and staffing that we've already had to make. I apologize, I know there's a lot of information, but it's a very, very complicated issue, and I'm sure you'll have questions as well. Secondly, another theme is access and equity. That's a significant focus for Portland Parks. We took a major step last year with a pilot of the Parks for New Portlanders program that council funded with one-time dollars. This year, in PK2, we're asking the council to fund this successful program on an ongoing basis. We've hired a staff person, and since implementing the pilot, we've made progress in helping Portland's immigrant and refugee communities engage in healthy activities through our park system. And specifically, for example, our World Cup Soccer program increased, we increased attendance and participation by over 12%, up to over 500 youths. And we also saw increased participation by 200 adults. A new basketball tournament was started and targeted to refugee and immigrant youth, and we had over 200 participants in that. We had seven youth ambassadors that were mentored to provide outreach services at various Portland high schools and middle schools, and approximately 100 youths participated in a refugee-immigrant job fair at East Portland Community Center. So the results of all these programs will be seen over time. We've also had a number of one-time ad packages that you can see on the slide that help address this issue of access and equity. PK24 is the ADA, Americans with Disabilities Act Barrier Removal and Transition Plan. This is the beginning of funding to address over 17,000 barriers that Parks has.
17 million is the cost too, right?
I'm sorry?
The cost is 17 million, I believe?
Yes, yes, for all of those. PK25 is equitable access for low-income Portlanders. This is really related to scholarships. I'll talk about a little bit, that a little bit later. PK28, new community gardens for vulnerable populations. PK30, restoring our summer swims. If you'll remember, last summer during the heat wave and 4th of July, I believe it was, most of our pools are closed on that holiday. This would allow us to restore service and expand, particularly on holidays and Sundays where many of our pools are closed. And PK31 is our ADA Inclusion Services Gap. And I think it's, an issue that this group should know about is that, over the past several years, we have, we've seen incredible increases in the requests for inclusion and assistance in our recreation programs. And, you know, over, historically, those have been primarily people with physical disabilities, needing help getting into a pool. But what's happening, and this isn't unique to Portland, but it's happening all over the country, the number of requests for assistance is growing. And it's growing primarily for special accommodations for kids that have cognitive disabilities, such as autism and attention deficit disorder and others. This is a mandate. This is something we have to do, is provide these inclusion services. And we just note that this is, this is really growing at a rate that none of us had anticipated. PK32 is RX Play. RX Play, we actually have a presentation to council next week to talk about the RX Play program, but in essence, this is something that has been funded by a series of grants, and it connects healthy parks with healthcare providers and allows prescriptions written for particularly youth that are having health issues that could benefit from exercise or more physical activity. PK33, the Saturday Youth Basketball. This original funding gap was produced by previous years of budget cuts, and now Portland Public Schools can no longer underwrite the custodial overtime charges for our Golden Ball basketball program. That's what that would cover. And then PK38 is Interstate Firehouse Cultural Center Feasibility Study. When a nonprofit was a tenant in that building and operated that building, and then they decided to leave, we had an opportunity to really look at expanding our services that we offer in this part of North Portland, achieving Charles Jordan's vision of a multicultural youth performing arts center. The funds that are requested here one-time would allow us to develop a plan for a mix of programs that would result in a sustainable funding model for Interstate Firehouse. Missing a page. As I mentioned earlier, equity and, the equity and access lens was critical when evaluating all the budget packages, both ads and reductions. The reduction packages that were included in our requested budget were focused on programs that use general fund to serve a very small customer base, or areas that are, currently have a high level of service and low need, or we develop packages that would minimize disproportionate impacts to underserved communities. So some of the examples of those are, for example, PK4, reducing our summer free-for-all program. This is an example of that equity lens. The Budget Advisory, our Budget Advisory Committee recommended that we keep our summer playgrounds program and the free lunch programs that we have, because they focus on underserved communities. And instead, this package would cease our movies and our concerts, which really are a very different demographic. PK4 is reducing our SUN Community School program by two sites. It's really focused on reducing the two sites in the most affluent parts of town. PK9 is a reduction to aquatics, closing the Buckman Pool. That is, for example, the pool that has, requires the most general fund subsidy per visit. PK10, Sellwood Community Center, closing that, is closing a community center in a, an area that is relatively affluent with fewer underserved community members. And PK11, eliminating the Dutch elm disease treatment. This predominantly addresses elm trees, as the name implies, but those elm trees are found mostly in areas of less need, higher tree canopy, and greater wealth.
So I just need to interrupt for a second. The Parks assignment was to find $2.9 million of cuts, and the Parks Budget Advisory Committee and I do not recommend any of them. So we were required to put them on the table. Many of you who've participated in this process before will remember that we've had many of these on the table before, and council has chosen to reject them. Because of the cuts over the last seven years, we didn't have anything else. So I have been accused of, or some have said, that there's a bunch of Washington monuments on here. Pretty much everything that Parks does is a Washington monument. Everything that we do is valued by somebody. And so just to be very clear, these are on the table because we had to provide $2.9 million of cuts. I don't support any of them. You're shocked and saddened, right?
And Mike, I just want to ask, just want to make sure we also have time for council to come back to some of these things that you're raising as well.
Yeah, thank you. Another current significant issue is the safety of the public, and so just to focus on one, is the ranger, ranger package, PK3. A central issue facing us in the past couple of years, continuing into 2016, is increased demand for service, particularly east of the Willamette River. Most of our rangers are on the west side, and this expansion program would help leverage the city council's investments in helping Portland residents who are experiencing homelessness. And just as an aside, according to the recent auditor survey, folks who live on the east side of Portland have a much lower perceived safety level of their parks. You can see some of the other packages there, and I'll leave that for questions. Next issue is protecting our investments. That's another significant priority of the council and the Bureau. You just heard in the Asset Management Report, the citywide, that we're currently faced with about a $248 million unfunded maintenance need over the next 10 years. And again, I'd like to acknowledge and And again, I'd like to acknowledge and highlight the new council policy that reserves 50 percent of excess fund balances for capital major maintenance, and between our parks replacement bond and receiving over $3 million in one-time major maintenance funds from council since the new policy, that gap is beginning to get smaller. You can see some of the projects that are on the list for ad packages. A large challenge that we face when developing reduction packages is this fact that the operations and maintenance of our buildings, our parks, and our natural areas make up nearly half of the budget's entire general fund allocation. So it's nearly impossible to develop 5 percent reductions without violating the value of protecting our assets. So you can see several packages here, reducing our major maintenance allocation, delaying hiring seasonal workers, natural areas reduction, and central services staffing reductions as part of that $2.9 million in package, in cuts. I want to highlight also this theme of partnerships, because they significantly impact the service that we can deliver. We currently have 150 friends and partner groups facilitating that investment through outreach, relationship building, and partner development, and a couple of great examples of leveraging partnerships include the Pioneer Courthouse Square, as we mentioned, Halpern Landscape Conservancy, development of Thomas Colley Park with Verde, our teen program, summer free-for-all program. So where, where we can, we create partnerships with others to maximize what we can do. I want to, there's a couple of packages on the table related to summer free-for-all, and so I wanted to mention one thing about that. There's a cut package that I just discussed about removing movies and concerts. There's also an ad package, and so, that is PK35, and that's a, a good example of the, of the challenge of leveraging partnerships. PK35 is the sponsorship gap. So, PK4 is the one which relates to closing down movies. So even if the council accepts the budget, the budget office's recommendation not to cut PK4, movies and concerts, and chooses to preserve the ongoing summer free-for-all program, this $130,000 one-time ask in PK35 is necessary to address the structural gap that has emerged as the program lost funding from a couple of key corporate sponsors. If this funding isn't received, the ongoing summer free-for-all package, PK4, won't be fully funded for the summer of 2017. Finally, I want to highlight just this issue of cost recovery. Similar to the challenges that arise from partnerships, the pressures to increase bureau revenues also can bring some unintended consequences. Recent years, general fund discretionary budget reductions have largely been met with increased revenue targets, which in turn has led to reprogramming some park space with, with revenue generating opportunities such as sports leagues, private sports leagues. It's led to increasing fees across much of our system, as the bureau has tried to maintain its service levels with decreased general funding. While this is, has led to greater cost recovery, it has also created some barriers to public recreation, specifically to Portlanders who need it the most. Another unintended consequence has been the increase in requests for scholarships. In 2008, we awarded $257,000 in scholarships, so that folks could use our programs and facilities. Two hundred fifty-seven. In 2015, we awarded $642,000 in scholarships. That's an increase of 250 percent over seven years, and the demand continues to grow. Last year, the council made a bold move to reverse this trend with the, the funding of $2 million for teen programs, and I talked about how many kids were able to use our facilities that a year earlier they would have had to pay for. So that's a great note. But to the council, I'd like to say that I think this is something that would be, it'd be good to come, come back at some later time and talk about the cost recovery policy. So finally, leave you with a few thoughts. Portland Parks and Recreation represents one of the greatest opportunities for the city to achieve greater equity and inclusion for all Portlanders. The demands being placed on Portland parks by our community has never been greater, and the health benefits have never been more important. We are key stewards of 11,000 acres and 1.2 million trees, which means that we have a role, a significant role to play in protecting our environment and addressing our changing climate. And the role of Portland Parks and Recreation in public safety has never been clear, from our programs that give our kids positive alternatives to spend their time, to our park rangers which can help ensure our public spaces are safe. So I can't finish a, a presentation without John Charles Olmsted's help, who said over 100 years ago, "While there are many things, both small and great, which may contribute to the beauty of a great city, unquestionably one of the greatest is a comprehensive system of parks and parkways." At this point, I'll turn it over to Judy Bluehorse-Skelton from the Parks Board and the Budget Advisory Committee.
Thank you, Director Abate. It's a real pleasure to be here this morning. I'm going to just do a few highlights and share the Portland Parks Board letter to the As Director Abate has stated earlier, this year's budget process has proved especially challenging. We're submitting this letter to accompany the park's requested budget. And as Director Abate mentioned, the BAC is comprised of members of the Parks Board, a representative from each of the seven coalition areas, four labor representatives, and representatives from ICO, APANO, and Hacienda. Collectively, we commit hundreds of hours of volunteer time to developing these values and guidelines which the director shared, ultimately aiming at a requested budget that's respectful and fair to park staff and all Portlanders who are impacted every day by the budget we recommend. Each year, the BAC begins our budgeting process by assessing and affirming the values we will use to guide our decision-making, which Director Abate shared earlier. For each of those values, we identified questions around impacts to people, to services and assets, and to equity. Director Abate and Commissioner Fritz both indicated to us early in this process that it would be impossible to follow your budget guidelines without violating our values, and they were correct. Many of us have participated in this process for several years. This was my fourth year, and it's always a learning experience. It's always inspirational to hear the commitment from community members to continue to come out in the evening and talk about these very serious impacts and the passion they have for this place we call Portland. So it's inspirational and also taxing. These cuts undermine our efforts to increase equity, reduce our ability to get ahead of parks' maintenance burden, and restrict services to children and families. We cannot provide a budget that reduces our resources by 2.9 million without significant impacts. The proposed reductions impact SUN schools, teen and free family programming, aquatics facilities, and access to restrooms. At their core, they impact equity. Additionally, they negatively impact the city's long-term investment in our natural areas, including the Dutch elm program. We recognize the serious concerns about homelessness in Portland and applaud your commitment to address it. We also acknowledge that federal directives and everyday conditions are causing parks and park programs, public land, assets, and services unavoidably to be part of the city's response to the homelessness crisis. As parks and park programs temporarily bear part of the burden in addressing the crisis, it further stretches resources that are already thin. Park rangers are being asked to engage those experiencing homelessness in our parks, providing humane and compassionate support. I would add that I've had home, those without homes approach me on campus, PSU, and elsewhere and say they appreciate the parks' rangers who engage with them. It's always a positive response, which is very, not surprising, but very reassuring to hear. Park maintenance staff should, shoulder additional work to maintain public health and safety. Budget reduction forgiveness for this and other pressures on park programs is urgently needed. An equitable and lasting solution is critical, not only for the future welfare of those who are experiencing homelessness, but for the residents of Portland who value and depend on public parks for their primary services. Parks are the heart and soul of the city. They are integral to the health and well-being of all our communities, and contribute to the city's vibrant economy, neighborhoods, and natural areas. Everyone can use parks, and everyone does. Eighty-five percent of Portlanders surveyed indicate that they use a park with great satisfaction. And those who are often underrepresented in surveys also use parks, those experiencing homelessness or disabilities, immigrant and refugee communities, communities of color, and those whose first language is not English. Charles Jordan said, "Parks are more than fun and games." With over 11,000 acres to steward, Parks provides critical ecosystem services in an increasingly changing climate, restoring streams for the return of wild salmon to the city, and recovering an industrialized landscape for new generations. While we respectfully recommend the requested budget for Portland Parks and Recreation, we do so with regret and deep concern for future generations and the livability of our city." Thank you.
Jeff, anything else? You're grabbing the microphone, I wasn't sure. Okay. So, questions, comments? I have a couple, maybe I can get, sorry? I'm sorry, we're gonna let Andrew go.
Up to you, yeah. We can give one, one-minute overview, so, and just to remind everyone, in your binders behind the review is a summary of the decision packages, and you can see the city budget office recommendations there as well.
Sure. So I'll make my comments within a minute, I promise, but effectively, you know, the most critical decision that the Parks Bureau is facing this year is the request for the arbitration settlement. We've recommended $3.5 million of that, but not including the portion for the preschool program. We've also recommended that we accept $1.2 million of the bureau's proposed reductions. It splits them at a net increase of $2.2 million in new ongoing resource for the Parks Bureau budget. We've recommended $4 million in capital improvements. This includes the Mount Scott Roof, and then a million dollars for the Washington Park sewer re-lining, and then $500,000 for the requested ADA improvements. We've recommended $100,000 for the scholarship program as a limited-term position to help with implementation of the new scholarship policy, and $220,000 of operations and maintenance costs ongoing for two new loos and splash pads at Fern Hill and Colonel Summers Park. We've also recommended reductions, $100,000 in delaying seasonal workers, so that they would begin servicing parks in May rather than March, except for in Portland the east side where we'd recommend that they continue to service those parks beginning in March. We've recommended a reduction of $100,000 in aquatics program that would close Buckman Pool and midday swims at Dishman. We've also recommended a reduction of $81,000 in general fund subsidy to Selwood Community Center of a total budget of $540,000, just to remove the $81,000 of general fund subsidy. We've also recommended that the decorative fountains be, the funding source and operations demands be transferred back over to the Water Bureau.
Okay, that was quick. Thank you. So let me, let me maybe kick off our discussion session with, raise a few issues, a couple which I'd like you to respond to. I guess, you know, a couple of big issues, one of approach and one of leverage. I don't think I need much of a response on the one of approach, that I, first of all, I raised, which is just a question of both strategy and philosophy here. You know, I spent the weekend in Austin, which has 140 percent of Portland's population, similar issues of gang violence, and, and twice the number of police officers that we have. The council's under pressure to both not only fill the ranks of the police bureau that we have funded today, we have about 40 vacancies, and we're likely to have more this spring, but we're also under pressure to increase the number of police officers. Frankly, my philosophy is I'd rather spend the money on upstream services like youth recreation, and that's one of the reasons why the council approved the program last year for community centers. We had a report on that program last week, and it just showed exactly what we're talking about. We had 20,000 kids served by this program, and it's one of those things where frankly, you can't see that it's working yet in terms of its hoped-for effect on youth violence. In fact, we had a terrible shooting inside a nonprofit's community center space Saturday night, four people wounded. And so, you know, we're right on the battle lines of this issue, but the, the approach, I think we're all in radical agreement. We'd rather spend money on trying to keep kids active and, you know, in positive recreation, and then give them access to education and employment rather than, than be trying to deal with gang violence issues through police services. So I guess that's not, you know, we're all in radical agreement about that issue, but I just wanted to raise the point again, that the juxtaposition of being the city that had a whole bunch more police officers, but also is suffering from gang violence and this terrible incident at the community center, I don't think we're on the wrong approach, but it's gonna take years for that approach of, you know, resources for kids versus policing kids to really pay off. I don't think we're wrong. Some issues, bigger issues that I want to ask for some response on, and feel, riff on that if you want to, but again, I think we're all in agreement about how well that program's working. Foundation nonprofit business support for what the bureau and the city is doing. I had a chance last week, on Thursday, to get here a presentation from San Antonio's, about San Antonio's Haven for Hope project, which is a homeless service facility on a much greater scale than what we do at Bud Clark Commons, but a similar combination of, of programs and assets. It's a $100 million facility, 60 percent of that came from the business community in the form of donations. We're not at that level here in Portland. So where should we be versus where we are today in, in business, foundation, and nonprofit, or business and foundation primarily? Philanthropy to support the program, and what's the state of the relationship between the bureau and the foundation?
Thank you, Mayor. And, you know, participating in the, in the 2020 Vision, that was a key, a key focus of 2020, was to, to prompt the bureau to be more entrepreneurial and more partner-like in, in seeking ways of leveraging funds. I, I can come back with, like, specific numbers, but it is true that probably 20 percent of our, our budget, not the volunteer hours, but 20 percent of our budget is coming from leveraged things, so grants, donations, the summer free-for-all programs, all of those. And I, I think, you know, because we brought some things to council before, that, that's something that we're constantly looking for, more opportunities and more partners. We happen to live in a city that there is a great deal of support for parks, and so there are lots of, lots of opportunities. We, we have a development coordinator, and in terms of summer free-for-all, Shelley Hunter, who does a marvelous job at, at partnering up with organizations, finding what it is that they're looking for, and then connecting them with some of our programs to help provide that support. Parks Foundation is in great shape, with a new executive director, a revamped board, and Jeff Anderson and I work very closely together. As a matter of fact, we're spending a couple hours tomorrow talking about strategic planning. I'm very encouraged about, with the foundation and the direction that they're heading. They are, as you know, working on fundraising efforts for a Wildwood Trail Bridge, a project that has been on our CIP list for many years and never, never sort of came to the top of the list, but an opportunity to provide great safety and great recreation on the Wildwood Trail, and they're also raising, working now to raise funds to help with Thomas Colley Park with Verde. So I think the state of that relationship is terrific, and I look for greater things to happen coming forward.
I think if we're relying on philanthropy to fund ongoing programs in particular and equity, I don't think it's gonna happen in the near future.
Oh, no, I don't, I wasn't implying that, that we, although clearly with summer free-for-all and some of those programs, you've done a great job of getting ongoing sponsors to carry a big part of the load, but I don't, no, I don't, please don't misinterpret any of these questions as me thinking like a privatizer, or that we can, you know, have, have donations support a lot of things that we do, but seeing what some other cities are doing, frankly, I think we can up our game, and it's gonna be a collective effort between the council and the, and the bureau and the foundation and others to do that. Second question of leverage, or actually, let me just put the other two on the table so other people can, can engage here. Other questions of leverage, one is, is mentioned in the document, Systems Development Charge Resources. I've had a chance to talk at some length with Commissioner Fritz about this. Do you have a, a robust enough plan to spend those funds on capital improvements, since they are coming in the door in five-gallon buckets at the moment? And that, that's my first question. And the second question is a much smaller ball question, and that is, I've, I've had some good discussions with you about underutilized buildings in the system where, at least on an interim basis, we could an interim basis, we could have a concessionaire in that building rather than having it boarded up. Are there some more opportunities like that? So, those two questions of leverage, the big one, how about SDCs? Are we up to spending all the money that we're getting? And two, do we have some more underutilized assets like the ones that we've been working on, you know, at Burnside, where we could get a concession into that space for the next five years or something?
So, let me answer the first one on system development charges. Yes, we have a number... A nice flow of money coming in at this time. The council will remember that many of the planners in parks were cut during the budget, and we haven't fully staffed back up again. And also, many of our staff are working on the bond measure projects as well as the current system development charge projects that we're doing, the two parks in East Portland. So, no, we're not going to be spending all of that money immediately. We do have a plan for how we're going to spend it and hopefully provide good public service jobs over the next recession by not spending it all right now when construction companies are so busy and prices are higher. We just don't have the staff within the Bureau to be able to plan all of the community engagement and projects that could be done.
I just want to commend that, one of those points, that assuming that Andrew's right in that this is not a permanent condition of economic uplift, spending all of those capital dollars at the beginning of the next recession when bid prices are low would be a wonderful outcome if we could manage to time the market that well. Underutilized buildings, you want to comment on that?
Yeah, I think you brought up a good point, Mayor. I think there are other opportunities for partnerships that are different than the sponsorship, and this is one of them. And as you know, we are working with procurement to get an RFP on the street to look at the, what we call Block A at Park and West Burnside, to see if there are some opportunities for a private business or organization to come into those buildings and activate that space that could have a great effect in the north park blocks. I'd also say that programming, and you sort of get to this, is really key. And as we look at Gateway Discovery Park, which is the name of the new park in the Gateway District that's coming, it's really going to be the Pioneer Courthouse Square for East Portland. It's gonna be the gathering spot. And so, things like food trucks and farmers' markets and all of those things will be... Will definitely be part of the mix. And as you know, it takes staffing just to organize all of that, and so it takes some money to make some money, if you will. But we're looking for those kinds of opportunities, places that we might have a food truck in for several hours a day, for example, just because there are a big collection of people. So, we continue to look for those.
One last comment on that point, before others have a chance here, and that is, urge you to move swiftly on the food cart, food truck front. Portlanders love their food carts. We're going to be in an existential crisis as the Goodman family builds out their parking lots into buildings in the downtown, not to mention all these parcels on Hawthorne and Belmont and places like that where people are used to food cart pods. And the new comp plan will give those owners incentives to do much more than a food cart on that site. So, for better or for worse, a lot of those spaces that have worked well as food cart pods are going away.
I have a few. I'll try to do them as a lightning round. First of all, I want to compliment you, Mike, for working in the Olmstead Brothers. Wherever Mike Halk is today, I know he's beaming. So, let's start with decorative fountains. My understanding is that there's at least three options that we're gonna consider. One is to keep them with parks. Two is to keep them with parks and have an IGA with the Water Bureau, or three is transfer the whole thing to Water Bureau. Are those the three gentlemen that are on the table? And the Water Bureau will address that, Mayor, when we do our council presentation. One of my favorite programs is community gardens. As I read your budget, no cuts to community gardens, but you have an ad package on the equity side to expand community gardens to some of the refugee communities. Is that correct?
That's correct, Commissioner.
Okay. Number three, Mike, I'm looking at your reorganization chart, and I guess at some point I will ask, just to sit down and better understand it, but in light of the significance of partnership to your business, and I think the 20% number that you laid out was illustrative, I don't actually see the word partnership in your org chart. So, where does partnership lie with this reorganization?
That's within a broader term called community relations in the support division.
Okay. And then, I want to ask both you and the Budget Office a question concerning the infrastructure project ranking summary sheet. And I'll ask you first, Mike, and then I'll ask the Budget Office. One of your asks that is not recommended for funding but is ranked number five in this objective ranking is the Halpern-Sequence Restoration Partnership. Could you just tell me in 10 seconds what that is and why it's important to the Bureau?
The Halpern-Sequence is a series of parks and fountains in what we call the South Auditorium District. It was designed... It's on the National Historic Register now, designed by famous landscape architect Lawrence Halpern. It is in need of major capital investments, and that hasn't happened over the years. And a group of property owners in the neighborhood has come forward and said, "We want to make that... Help make that happen," working with a partner, Halpern Landscape Conservancy. They are working to form an LID that would raise about $2.5 million. So, our 1.5 would leverage a total of $4 million for those projects.
Thank you. And then, my question to you, Andrew, is, in your scoring, it actually scores very high. It comes in number five. I don't want to pick a fight with P-Bot because there's some things I know Steve cares about that didn't score quite as high, but just in terms of the measure that you used on this, why did Halpern's score so high?
Sure. So, the fountains currently have a couple of safety concerns associated with them that increase the safety component of the... In terms of like how they're ranked, there's some broken concrete, exposed electrical areas, and some inoperable lighting. So, that's bumped it up in terms of its safety.
Yeah, I think that's right. It did fall below the line in terms of available funding, and for those who are looking at that list, one of the reasons for that is project number nine, which is the data center and very expensive, you know, about $4.8 million. That's a project that has to get done if the Portland building renovation project moves forward, and since council gave the approval for that, that's the reason why that project got bumped up. Assuming there's more... There's additional one-time funding in the forecast, we may be able to go a little bit further down this list. One question I have is, on the Halpern fountains, how did you decide sort of what the appropriate public-private funding mix is? I mean, one of the criticisms I've heard about these is that although they are public fountains, they're not particularly easily accessible, and a lot of the benefit is, you know, goes to the folks who live nearby. It sounds like they recognize that by raising... Did you say $2.5 million?
Yeah.
I'm just curious, sort of $2.5 private versus $1.5 public. How did we come to that ratio, and is it possible to get an additional private investment to offset some of the public cost?
I guess I would... I would... It's a question primarily, I'd say, for Bob Nato, who has sort of has a member of the Halpern Landscape Conservancy and also a property owner, has kind of been at the head of this effort. I know that they have had months and months of conversations with property owners to try to figure out what is the maximum amount that they could get and have the LID pass. One of the things that, you know, the council might consider is that the $1.5 million be contingent upon that LID being, you know, passing. But our feeling, Andrew, is that there is probably an excess of $10 million of need in the fountains and the parks and substantial capital investment. The fact that they were willing to try to put together $2.5 million, I think leveraging, you know... You know, it's all our responsibility that seemed like maybe if we could do even less than one-to-one, and they were happy with that number. I would have expected to want to do a one-to-one match, but... So, we came in less than that.
Mike, first of all, let me start by saying after 42 years of working and living through two major recessions and a lot of blips, I empathize with your having to submit a budget with cuts. It was never fun, and I'm glad I don't have to do it anymore. Last year, you talked about the racetrack. I didn't hear any conversation about the golf course. If you'll remember, last year I brought up the issue in response to, I think you wrote $300,000 under in the golf course. You were gonna go to reserves. There was some discussion, can you take overages in the golf course and spend them somewhere else? I never heard back as to whether you can do that, although I do believe you can transfer that money within the particular Bureau to spend on other projects. I think the term is enterprise or something like that, and other departments do it. So, I would urge you to make sure that, number one, the golf course and the racetrack and other such enterprise organizations make money. I don't have much tolerance for these... For the city to support these if they don't make money. Second of all, when I lived in Maryland 10 years ago, I paid $100 around to play at a public county-owned course. Today, to play at a privately-owned course that allows the public to play, I pay probably on the average of $70. To play at a city course, which is better than most of the courses that I play, I'm guessing it's 30 or less at my age. If you were to raise... I would ask you to think about raising the fee on the golf course. If you came to me and said, "I'd like for you to pay $2 more," there's about 300,000 rounds, if I remember correctly. Let's say it's $3. You've just created $1 million worth of revenue. I noticed that seven of your cuts are around $300,000 or less. You asked me to pay $1, you can keep the pool open. I think it was $319,000. I can't imagine anyone complaining about paying $3 more to play at a course that's better than 99% of the public courses out there. I would just urge you to think about that. I'd rather pay more than see that pool closed, especially if it's $3.
We'll do that. We'll consider that. Commissioner did in the early 90s to do a non-resident surcharge. That didn't work out.
Would that change... Would that take a change in council policy to allow enterprise funds to fund the rest of parks?
It's the enterprise fund. Our enterprise fund stays whole within its entire... We don't transfer funds outside of it.
Right, currently, so we could... But we could change council policy to allow that.
And I don't think it would take a change in policy. Enterprise fund resources can be transferred to another fund. Council would need to take that action, but it's not a policy action. It would just be a budgetary action.
Great, great session. Thank you.
I've got a few. First of all, I want to thank Parks. East Portland is very happy that we chose both Beech and Gateway Discovery Park to be putting and bring some equity in East Portland. I also appreciate the work David Douglas has done with Parks and trying to be more collaborative with our lack of space to build schools. So, we've been having quite a few discussions. I have just a few questions in regard to some of your budget items, more because I'm still learning. And I notice you have youth ambassadors, seven of them, in Portland high schools. Can you define which high schools?
I think I can get some of them. I know, because David Douglas, Park Rose. I'll have to ask, is... Eileen, do you know the other... Or Art?
Okay. That was my concern, because as we know, the greatest immigrant population is in East Portland, and David Douglas and Park Rose. And in regard to your son-school programs, I know the CBO isn't recommending cutting them, but I'd like to... Being that schools are kind of my thing, and I'm kind of familiar with the son program since we have them in all of David Douglas schools, are you aware in these particular schools, because there's been such a demographic shift, what their free and reduced lunch count is of the school, not the program, those in the program, but the whole school? Because that's what we obtained son school is because in Douglas, I think our lowest free and reduced lunch count is like 65%, and our highest is like 95%. So, I was kind of curious on that and maintaining programs in areas that don't have as great a need.
And the two son schools that we're talking about are Mount Taber and Beaumont. I don't know if we know the percentages, but I'm sure we could get those easily.
Yeah, and that's why I'm curious. What is lowest? At one time, Douglas was only 39%.
It's more of that order. The challenge, though, is that for low-income kids at more affluent schools, there's still the need for the program.
No, I understand that, but I'm just trying to get a sense of where this at, since they're asking to cut it and CBO's asking to keep it.
We'll get that information.
We don't want to cut it, just to be clear.
The other question is on preschool programs. I'm not familiar with your preschool programs in the parks. Are they in all the community centers?
They're no longer in all the community centers, but most of the community centers.
Okay. And I don't know if we've been following preschool education. Douglas has a pilot program in one of their schools, Earl Boyle, that is free preschool for all the kids in the catchment area. We also have added classrooms at our Cherry Park School. The trend is going, and the push, is to fund preschool in regular elementary schools and make it pre-K through 5, 6, 8, whichever your configuration is. Are the parks Bureau looking forward? Because if that continues to grow, and we're having great success at Earl Boyle, showing we have one of the lower incomes, a lot of ELL students, we're showing how much it affects the achievement gap, in fact, that those kids don't have a gap when they start kindergarten. So, there's a potential that eventually the schools will be dealing with preschool. Are you looking that far forward? Because it sounds like it helps fund some of the community centers.
It does, but make sure I understand your question. Are you saying that if we shifted and more schools were doing preschool?
Right.
Would we have an... You know, would we not be needed? Is that what you're...
Well, or are... What are you... Are you looking forward enough to that possibly happen into the future? Because you can't find all of it at a sudden, so I'm...
Yeah, I guess what I'd say about our preschool program is it's longstanding within the Bureau. We've had preschool programs and education programs for many decades. The... And the reality is, is that they have been in community centers and been self-supporting. And where we've had them, where we have them, they are loved, and there are long waiting lists. We... I should also mention that there are great opportunities for scholarships in our programs, but as a whole, until recently, we covered... It was self-sufficient as a program. When, I think it was three years ago, we eliminated preschool programs at Fulton Community Center, and that was the subject of great consternation within the community when we did that. That was a budget reduction to transition Fulton Community Center from being a staffed facility to basically just being a rental facility. There was a lot of hue and cry from folks who had their kids in that preschool program. So, we still have preschool programs at Southwest and many other community centers, and most of them have waiting lists. So, from that, I would say that we have not planned for a day when, you know, the schools are offering, you know, additional, you know, thousands of slots for preschool, but maybe that's something we should consider.
Well, I would say it's very important to consider because the trend is going that way. A lot of school districts throughout the state who are getting bond measures are putting them in their schools. So, you're gonna see a more and more trend of that happening. Douglas hopes someday to have them in all our schools because of the need. So, it might be something you want to, in the future, thinking about as time goes on to monitor what's happening at the state level in regard to that funding.
So, what's on the table right now is to completely cut the program, and I just want to amplify what Director Batte just said, in the past, the council has agreed to continue those programs because they were cost-neutral. We can't raise the fees anymore and disturb the demographics that we're able to serve. We're going from paying our instructors, I think something like $14 an hour, certainly less than $15 an hour with no benefits, to paying them about $18 an hour with benefits. So, it's not like we are extreme... You know, they're not getting generous wages. In fact, I would even question our framing of living wage shots. That's the differential between paying these preschool teachers and giving them permanent jobs with benefits. And so, that's really... I'm glad you've honed in on this. This is one of the core issues for the whole Budget Committee to consider, is do we just cut it because it now costs us money, or is it an investment in our future in the kids who are... And families who are served? And are we going to pay those Parks workers ongoing... And are we going to pay those parks workers ongoing wages with benefits?
Oh, and Rob, a chance to each ask a question, and then we'll have to move on here in the next few minutes, but go ahead.
Pretty quick. If I understood correctly, some of the parks facilities were closed on weekends, and you gave an example, I think it was July 4th, that some, one or more pools was closed. With 700 lifeguards, doesn't this, you know, how do you rationalize closing something when it's needed absolutely the most? I mean, on weekends, that's when people get to the parks, because otherwise they're working. That's number one. And number two, and this is really aimed at transportation, the parking fees up at Washington Park, as an example, I find really regressive. I can afford to pay the fee, but the people who go to the parks are going to find the increased fee very difficult to pay, and it's going to keep them out of the parks. So I'll stop editorializing.
I, I, let me take that one for PBOT, because that's, that really isn't PBOT, that's parks. So parks put in the paid parking at Washington Park. PBOT doesn't collect it. Those fees that are collected at Washington Park go right back into Washington Park. So they pay for additional rangers, they pay for a free shuttle that you can move all the way around the park. So leveraging the public investment of the MAX station that's there, so you can ride MAX now and jump on a free bus that will take you right up to the Rose Garden. So to pay for that, that's what those parking fees are for.
I didn't know that, thank you.
Yeah. And let's see, sorry, your first question? Oh, was it, why do we have some things closed in the summertime? It's, it's, it's basic economics. It's on holidays or on weekends when we're, the cost model is, we're going to have to pay greater amount for our staff. That's one of the reasons why it came up last year, when we looked at that and said, well, you know, what would it, what would it take? And it's about $25,000, $28,000 to have additional hours from, from what we currently offer in the summertime.
Considering the number of people that might be using the parks, that on a per capita basis, that may be quite reasonable.
It, it's interesting, though, we have some numbers from 4th of July, for example, and it tends not to be a very highly-used day. So that's been part of the, you know, I can't explain that, seems like it would make sense to me, but yeah. Let me give Rob a shot, and then give the Commissioner in charge a chance for the last word.
Yeah, just real quick. I was wondering if CBO could tell me how many positions would be eliminated by the recommendation that preschool be dropped entirely? And also, if you could break down the costs for the Fulton and Selwood, which you identified as being facilities that would probably not be able to remain solvent in the absence of the pre-K, if those, if pre-K were kept at those, how much would that cost in terms of subsidies?
So it'd be, it'd be the $80,000 of current general fund subsidy that it receives as a center of the whole, and then $150,000 for the preschool portion of it. And I don't know the number specifically for Fulton. In terms of the number of preschool teachers, I actually don't know that as well. Jeff, can you?
It's 28 positions. Commissioner Fitz, some closing thoughts for now?
Thank you, Mayor. I appreciate the City Budget Office's recommendations, and many of them I support and appreciate we're not making those cuts or not proposed to make those cuts. If we prioritized equity over everything else, we would be funding the Parks for New Portland this program, we'd be funding ragers for East Portland, and we would be funding the interstate bypass community center support. So I urge us all to consider, if there is additional money coming in, in the April forecast and such, that those would be a priority. On a practical note, cutting administration assistance in the Director's Office seems like a politically correct thing to do, however, it's already so lean that it would result in increased difficulty in managing the Bureau, which has over 200, 2,000 employees. And I direct a lot of the concerns that we get to the Director's Office to sort through the Bureau. So cutting that administrative position, while it's vacant because somebody else stole the wonderful person who was in it, it's, it's going to be a significant cut to the Bureau.
Mayor, I just want to add one comment, which is that I've already asked Carmen to check and see if there's any FEMA funds available to address existential crises, so maybe we could be of some use to the Parks Bureau on the food carts issue.
All right, yes. If FEMA funds food carts, it's a great day. Well done, thank you very much. We're going to move on immediately to transportation. We're a little bit behind, but not too badly, so take a stretch break if you need one, but we're going to get them queued up and start right away. Okay, good morning, Director Treet and team. We will have you start with your presentation, and then have the, have the CBO lightning round response, and then have some time for discussion. I may have to slip out for a minute to finish your presentation, don't take it personally.
And is this one that was just handed out, is that different from one we had before?
Yeah, there's one slide that was added. I think it's slide number four, but the rest of it is the same. So we have a slide deck that hopefully is getting pulled up. While they're doing that, I'm Leah Treet, the Director of the Portland Bureau of Transportation. I'm joined today by Alyssa Maher, our Senior Business Manager, Maurice Henderson, my Assistant Director, and Linda Netikoven from our Budget Advisory Committee. Oh, good, great. All right, so thank you for the opportunity to, are you going to do it or you don't want me to do it? Sorry, logistics. So thanks for the opportunity, and so out of all the public services that PBOT's provide, that PBOT provides, we have an overarching policy of safety and mobility for all. And this budget is a reflection of those goals in a very resource-constrained environment. So to start, I'd like to highlight the role that PBOT is playing in the city's housing emergency. We are partnering with BDS and the Design Commission to expedite permits for affordable housing construction. Permits for affordable housing rise to the top of the pile and are prioritized over all others for review. We have taken ownership of a former ODOT property to provide a location for Hazelnut Grove. We're working with OMF to use O'Briant Square parking garage as an overnight sleeping location, and we fund a large chunk, if not the majority, of the campsite cleanup contract through OMF. We're also working with OMF on other actions we can take to address housing challenges. We're now solidly one year into the implementation of Portland Progress, which is our two-year work plan with identified performance metrics. The budget programs and priorities that I'm going to discuss today will follow our strategic work plan. And with Portland Progress, we're focused on delivering the key services that support our community core values of high quality of life, safety, health, equity, and economic Portland Progress has enabled us to focus our work on, they're building on our tradition of innovation. A clear example of this happened this weekend. Portland was chosen at South by Southwest in Austin over the weekend as one of seven finalists out of 78 applications to compete for the final prize of $40 million from the US DOT and $10 million from Vulcan to test next-generation mobility solutions, including smart vehicles and autonomous vehicles. So to the budget. So I'll start with some of the basics of where our money comes from. There are three key elements to note here. One, we have a very diverse sources of revenue. Two, a substantial share of our revenue is related to motor vehicle use. And three, we receive a significant amount of revenue from other agencies for work we perform for them in the right of way. So an example of that is BES. I think I skipped a slide, sorry about that. So where the money goes is this slide. You can see a breakdown. We invest our revenues in our system of roads, sidewalks, bike lanes, transit, and trails that Portlanders use every day to get from place to place. And for example, about 30% of our budget goes to basic operations and maintenance of the transportation system. Capital projects make up for 34%, and we also invest in our future through planning Okay, there's a handout I think you all were just provided. So as you can see from this handout, 50% of our total revenue comes from federal, state, or local agencies and partners. 90% of our capital improvement program is made up of state and federal funds. And as Commissioner Novick has repeatedly said, PBOT's budget really depends on the kindness of strangers. And these kindnesses come with strings attached. We don't have full control over how we spend our money. Federal funds, for example, can't be spent on maintenance. We're also subject to the fluctuations in outside revenue sources and in the willingness of outside agencies to spend more money on transportation dollars. And a few illustrations to make this point. State and federal gas taxes have not kept up with inflation. State and federal grants for capital projects have been in decline for a number of years. And although Congress passed a new transportation reauthorization bill, the amount of federal I'd like to talk a little bit more about how we spend our money and the funding challenges we face. So we own and manage assets worth an estimated $10 billion. We operate and maintain some of the city's largest assets, including our largest single asset, roughly 4,800 lane miles of city streets. Each year, as we budget to most effectively manage these assets, we face a fundamental challenge. Our streets are deteriorating faster than we can conserve and maintain them. 45% of the streets that carry daily commuters, buses, and freight are in poor or very poor condition. Our goal is to reduce this number to 20%. 57% of our residential streets, the streets that people use to get to their neighborhood stores, to visit the local library, or take their kids to school, are in poor or very poor condition, and we want to get this number down to 30%. Achieving these goals, however, would cost $1.3 billion over the next 10 years. And because we lack the resources to keep up with maintenance demands, the gap grows by about $1 million a month. And there are other gaps in the system that also need attention. We have about 55 center lane miles of unpaved streets, and the price tag to bring them up to standard is about $600 million. And half of our sidewalk system does have corner ramps, but to bring all corner ramps into ADA compliance would be about $90 million over 10 years. But I am proud of the efficiencies that we have found in how we do business. We have made great strides in our ability to do more with less, but over the long term, without new revenue, we're going to continue to fall behind. Safety and maintenance, two of our highest budget priorities, and with really good reason. During our transportation funding outreach in recent years, we have heard again and again how important safety and maintenance are to the City Council and to the community at large. So I'm going to start with safety. Last year, we had 37 traffic fatalities in the city of Portland, and that's compared with 34 homicides. So the need to focus our efforts on safety is very clear. To this end, we have been working with our Vision Zero Task Force to gather new and more refined data in support of our Vision Zero goal of reducing fatalities and serious crashes to zero. A decade ago, the city identified 10 high-crash corridors, where 2% of our streets account for a disproportionate number of our traffic fatalities and serious injuries. The data is telling us that we need to look beyond these 10 corridors. In fact, to be effective, we are coming to see that we should be concentrating on a high-crash network. We have also gained valuable insight about people who walk. As this chart shows, pedestrians are our most vulnerable users. By focusing on making people who walk safer, we have the potential to make large gains in the overall safety of our system. We've also learned that crash numbers don't tell the full safety story. We have streets that are so unsafe that people who bike and walk avoid them altogether. These streets, we're calling our high-risk network, don't have a high crash rate. Instead, they're areas where we believe there's latent demand. We need to focus on them as well if we're serious about getting our goal of Portlanders to walk and bike safely.
Leah, do you have, for the 37 fatalities in 2015, do you know how many of those were pedestrians?
It was more than 50%, but I can ask Margie for the exact number. Is she here? Okay, we'll get it to you in just a minute.
Yeah, I was interested that in 14, it was more than 50% pedestrians too, which is different from the rest of the country.
This country is experiencing the same stubborn rate of pedestrian fatalities, but I think we are ahead of other cities in terms of the 50% number, but there's an increase nationwide. So Vision Zero is central to our overall safety strategy, and over the last two years, we've made great strides toward integrating it into everything that we do. Again, I'd like to thank the Mayor and the City Council for your leadership on Vision Zero and making it an official policy of the city. By taking that forward-thinking step, you have given a real boost to our work with other city bureaus and with regional and state partners as well. I just returned from a Vision Zero conference in New York City, which is well ahead of most American cities in the Vision Zero effort. And although we're almost two years behind New York City in our launch efforts, many of the programs and policies that we are crafting here in Portland are already being lauded as the gold standard for Vision Zero. Later on, I'll have some more detail on our Vision Zero safety investments when I talk about our decision packages. 10, sorry, so I had that wrong, I apologize. It's 10 pedestrian fatalities out of 37, so that's not more than 50%. Sorry, so three years ago, Mayor Hales and Commissioner Novick challenged PBOT to get back to basics and annually preserve 100 lane miles of streets. So I'm really happy to report two things about this program. One, as we've exceeded our 100-mile goal for the last two years, and we're on pace to meet or exceed the goal this year. And second, and perhaps more significantly, with this budget, we have realigned resources to ensure the long-term sustainability of the Back to Basics program. As part of the realignment, we have also secured ongoing funding for our ADA ramp program. For the past two years, PBOT has had to take money out of our contingency fund to cover the cost of both of these programs. But I'm pleased to say that we've now fixed the structural deficit in our five-year forecast, fully funding both programs by identifying an additional $3 million of our own resources to close the gap. And our Back to Basics program is, success is also based in part on our innovative maintenance techniques. An example of this is Fog Seal. It's a technique that allows us to extend the life of residential streets, and we're using Crack Seal on our arterial streets for the same reason. Both of these programs are cost-effective, and a little goes a long way. There's also, have you handed out the deterioration curve? Somebody? Okay, so you also have another big handout about our maintenance backlog and our deterioration curve. So we have a maintenance policy where we try to carry out the right treatment in the right place at the right time. In practice, this means we focus on treatments that will keep a street from falling into poor or very poor condition. And as you can see from the handout, the reason is simple, it saves us money. The cost of repairing a road that has fallen into poor or very poor condition is typically 10 times more expensive than maintaining a street that is in fair or good condition. With City Council's support, our maintenance effort is producing results. A year ago, 49% of our busy streets were in poor or very poor condition. This year, that figure has dropped to 45%. The fundamental maintenance gap continues to grow, but with further investment, we hope to slow the deterioration curve. Through our maintenance program, we preserve what we already have, but in our capital improvement program, we build what we need for the future. And on this slide, I'd just like to highlight a few of our notable CIP projects. First, in St. John's, we're calming traffic on residential streets and separating bike and pedestrian traffic from freight. In East Portland, we're making it safer to walk and bike to essential services and public transit. And on Southwest Barber, we're working with ODOT on a variety of safety improvements. We must also ensure that our transportation system works for all Portlanders. That's why we're committed to equity as a fundamental value to guide our programs and policies. And I'd like to make mention of a few of our recent milestones. Last year, we reclassified an existing position and hired an equity and inclusion manager to help guide and improve our work across the Bureau. This year, we have reclassified another position to hire a public outreach and engagement coordinator to connect with underserved communities and bring all voices to the table. Bike Town, another example, will hire 50% of its workforce from underserved communities. In addition, as we plan bike-share stations, we're prioritizing sites within 500 feet of affordable housing, and we will be offering 500 discount memberships for low-income communities. And finally, we are advancing our equity goals by transforming the way we're awarding contracts. We are currently building a list of on-call A&E services firms. To open the door to minority-owned firms, we have made it a requirement that any firm on the list must commit to a goal of at least 20% of their work going to MWE. on the list must commit to a goal of at least 20 percent of their work going to MWE/SB subcontractors. Before I turn to the decision packages, I'd like to mention one more significant area of work supported in this budget, and that's active transportation. Our active transportation programs encourage Portlanders to bike and walk more as a way to support our climate action goals. Not only are these programs, programs like Sunday Parkways and Safe Routes to School, some of our most popular programs, they're also incredibly effective. For example, thanks to the initiatives like Sunday Parkways and our investments in safe, comfortable biking facilities, we have achieved the highest rate of bicycle commuting of any major city in the United States, 7.2 percent. And this is up remarkably from 6 percent in the last census. And I'll add that there are areas of the city now where we are seeing bike commute rates over 30 percent. So it's pretty phenomenal. All right, our decision packages. I want to talk just briefly about decision packages from last year, because last year you all approved the largest general fund investment in transportation in more than 30 years. And today, I'm happy to report that we're making progress turning those investments into transportation improvements for Portlanders. Three major projects are going to bid this month. One of the most significant of these projects is our 122nd Avenue Pedestrian Safety Improvement Project. We'll build a string of sidewalk improvements and flashing beacons along Trimet's Line 71. This includes sidewalks near Prescott Elementary in the Park Rose neighborhood, three flashing beacons on 122nd Avenue, and filling sidewalk gaps on southeast Foster Road in the Lentz neighborhood. Because these improvements will improve safety for people walking the transit, Trimet has pledged to provide more frequent service with Line 71, a longtime goal of these Portland This year, our general fund requests continue the city's commitment to investing in the basic safety and maintenance measures that are so important to sustaining a mobile, prosperous, and equitable city. As stewards of critical infrastructure, we submitted 15 requests for the major maintenance and infrastructure replacement funds. We were pleased to find out last week that the city budget office ranked two of our projects among the top three. The Traffic Signal Reconstruction Program was ranked number one, and the Northeast Sunderland Bridge Replacement was ranked number three. Last year, the council approved general fund dollars for the youth bus pass program. Again, we're asking for another million dollars to continue funding the youth bus pass. If it is not provided and PBOT is asked to absorb the program, it will represent $5 million in cuts from other PBOT programs over our five-year forecast. We're also asking for money for a Vision Zero decision package. As I mentioned, the data we're collecting with our Vision Zero Task Force is yielding very valuable insights, and one of the most valuable things we have learned is the outsized role that drugs and alcohol play in crashes. In fully 62 percent of crashes, drugs or alcohol play a role. So our Vision Zero general fund request targets this disturbing trend of impaired driving. We want to engage the community with a safety and education and awareness campaign and work with our partners in the Police Bureau and Fire and Rescue to educate high school students on the risks of impaired driving. We also hope to partner with Old Town Chinatown Bars to reduce drunk driving from establishments that account for a high number of crashes. And we also will provide low-cost safety improvements at high-crash locations. We've also asked for funding to create a street plan for connectivity in growing centers. So this is focused on East Portland, which suffers from large block patterns and a broken street grid that pushes all the community's functions onto busy, wide arterials that often have higher-than-average crash rates. PBOT's request for a street plan for connectivity in growing centers will establish tools for improving street connectivity as development occurs. It will focus on two traditionally underserved areas in East Portland to create more equitable service levels where street connectivity is deficient. We also have a request for Southwest Corridor. The decision package had it in at $420,000. It has now been reduced to $300,000. I don't know if that's reflected in your documents or not.
Leah, I think actually, the Southwest Corridor request is listed officially as a special appropriation, because that's also a priority for the Bureau of Planning and Sustainability, because having a Southwest Corridor high-capacity transit project is essential to achieving the Barber Concept Plan.
Thank you, that's correct. As I wrap up, I would just like to take a look at some of the big issues that I think are going to challenge PBOT in the city in the coming years. And one of those is going to be managing scarce parking. With community and council support, we've made progress with a more proactive management of parking. We've adjusted downtown on-street parking rates to better manage supply and demand to the benefit of visitors and downtown stakeholders alike. We have launched a program to provide reduced-rate parking to low-income workers in the central city, and we have reached the halfway point of our installation of the long-awaited parking meters in Northwest Portland. Looking ahead, parking will be at the forefront of many policy debates. We will continue to work with our community and business partners across the city to use parking effectively as a tool to support neighborhood vitality and commercial activity while recognizing needed changes to meet our climate action goals. This past year was also momentous in our regulatory division. We successfully launched forward-thinking Private for Hire regulations. These regulations have helped us meet Portlanders' demand for more Private for Hire options. They have also made it easier for local entrepreneurs to enter the market. A clear example of this is the successful, and frankly, very inspiring, launch of PDX Yellow Cab by Somali immigrants. The Private for Hire market remains very dynamic, and new technology, as it comes online, and consumer demands are going to continue to evolve. Our challenge in the city is going to be to remain nimble and creative in our efforts to support the dynamic market and protect our customers. We'll continue to face the challenge of accommodating a growing population within our existing transportation system. If we do nothing, driving is going to continue to grow, and we will continue to see increased congestion, air pollution, and traffic fatalities increase. That's the summary of my remarks, and I'd like to now turn it over to Lynda Netikovin, who is the vice chair of our Bureau Advisory Committee, for the Budget Advisory Committee statements.
Thank you, Leah, and good morning, Mayor Hales, and councilors and budget committee members. I'm very pleased to be here. Deborah Dunn, who's the chair of our committee, had also planned to be here this morning but is unable to join us. So I'm covering both our remarks. For those of you that don't know, this is our first year having a Bureau Advisory Committee for the Bureau of Transportation, as well as a Budget Advisory Committee. Our previous letters of transmittal with our budgets in previous years always asked for that possibility, because we feel, given the complexity of the things that PBOT handles, having folks that are studying programs, policies, and plans year-round leads to better budget recommendations. So we're hoping we're on our way to doing an even better job than we've done in the past. I know we're running late, and I'll be very brief. We want to thank the staff for working tirelessly with us, using creative approaches sometimes to our budgeting process to kind of get through some tough decision-making, and I'll talk about that in a moment. We've certainly been very clear in our commitment to the goals of equity, safety, and maintenance, being very consistent with the things that Leah has outlined in her presentation. We want to talk with you about a couple of things. First, the 5 percent cut that was asked for from our ongoing general fund dollars. We have very few, as you see from your budget materials. We spent actually a lot of time on this, so much time trying to figure out how to make a cut, that we actually didn't get to review our ad packages until after the budget was submitted. So I want to say first this morning that we're very much in support of the ad packages that the Bureau has brought forward, and we did discuss them after the fact. We looked long and hard. We began to realize, as we understood better the roles that PBOT plays, that we were already contributing to supporting the response to the housing crisis in many ways, and so our original $500,000 cut was reduced. However, we were left with, considering cutting the Out of the Mud project was really our only remaining option. For us, we felt that we could not, in good conscience, make a recommendation for a cut to that program. We've been waiting for it for so long, and this is our effort to address Portland's many miles of unimproved streets. These are largely in lower-income neighborhoods. These are areas with many service and infrastructure needs, and this program would address the equity, safety, and maintenance concerns that we are all striving for. It's a necessary first step to finally begin to achieve more connectivity in these areas, and it's already a very no-fills approach, and it would reduce our bonding capacity if we were to cut that program. So we came forward, and in our letter indicated we did not want to make any kind of a cut in our ongoing general funds, and we hope that you don't think we're special, or don't know how to follow the rules, or whatever. We labored over this. In fact, I sometimes think we neglected other parts of the budget because we were so concerned about making this cut. So with that, I will stop for the moment and be available to answer any questions.
Thank you. Andrew, do you want to walk us through your recommendations, and then we'll take it from you now?
Hi, Young O'Yang. I'm the city budget office analyst for PBOT. I'm just going to quickly go over our recommendations, particularly in regards to PBOT's general fund request. So, as Leah's mentioned, we did recommend $1.8 million for the two major maintenance infrastructure projects, so traffic safety reconstruction and the Sunderland Bridge replacement. Those ranked first and third in our ranking process for risk, risk of failure, I guess. And then we also recommended $300,000 for the Vision Zero package. The request was $500,000. We recommended $300,000, and that was the portion that's related to infrastructure, so the rapid flashing beacons and other pedestrian safety infrastructure. The Bureau's request was for one-time funds, but we recommended $300,000 ongoing to be spent on pedestrian safety infrastructure due to the large numbers of accidents and And then we also recommended the $250,000 cut to Out of the Mud in light of the housing and homeless crisis. That's it.
Great, thank you. Questions, comments, discussion?
I have a question. Director Tret, first of all, thank you for an outstanding handout and PowerPoint presentation, and I also appreciate the font sizes and the clarity, especially the font sizes. We didn't get a chance to really talk about the dashboards in the last presentation. I'd like to ask you about your dashboards. And in particular, I want to focus on Vision Zero, because I think conceptually, Vision Zero is one of the most important things that you and Steve have brought forward. But I'm fearful that not enough of our friends and neighbors are bought into Vision Zero. And so it looks like, am I right in thinking that your dashboard on total number of serious incapacitating traffic injuries and fatalities citywide is one way of measuring the success of Vision Zero?
Yes, that's accurate.
And that's a very harsh measurement, right? That's the ultimate, someone who dies because of someone else's reckless behavior. How do we measure the softer compliance issues? The people that are speeding on local roads, folks that are conspicuously disregarding traffic safety signs, treating a yellow as a green or as a chance to accelerate through an intersection. And I must say, it's equal opportunity, it's bikes, it's cars, it's even Trimet buses. And I speak as someone who rides a bus, walks, and also drives. My sense is, in some ways, while I think Vision Zero is one of your, again, I think it's one of the most important things we can do, and I say that for both personal reasons and for city reasons and philosophical reasons, I'd like to get a sense from you as to how can we win that fight? Because, again, we'd all like to see a reduction in serious injuries, and we would applaud that. But what other kinds of indicators and what kind of support do you need to really make this thing work?
So Commissioner Fish, thank you for the question. You know, if you look at Sweden, which is the birthplace of Vision Zero and is decades into the effort, their performance metrics of things that they are looking at cover more than the traditional three E's, which are education, engineering, and enforcement. They move into encouragement, they move into equity. But their specific performance measures, while they do track the number of traffic injuries and fatalities, they are also looking at the number of citations being issued by their enforcement authorities. They're looking at entry rates into drug rehabilitation programs. They're looking at on-the-ground campaigns and trying to measure sort of softer things that can be done to actually prevent somebody from getting behind the wheel when they're impaired. So those are all very important things that we need to do. Our task force that is setting up our plan that we'll be entering into next year is looking at all these performance metrics and more. And in order for us to be successful, it can't be the Transportation Bureau alone, it can't be the Police Bureau alone, and it can't be the city alone. It's going to take a big tent of people to surround the issue and embrace that culturally it's not okay to speed. It's not okay to get into a car when you're impaired or when you're in a bad mood and drive aggressively. So I look at the success of Mothers Against Drug Driving several years ago and how effective that was, and it was a bunch of advocates that got together and made it no longer culturally acceptable to drive drunk. And we need to have that same energy and attention from a whole bunch of different groups around speeding, aggressive driving, and traffic fatalities and injuries.
Well, I, I'm sorry, I guess we're both on. I look forward over the next years, I look forward to working with you and Steve to really expand the scope of what you want to do and address the cultural problems, because, I mean, I've been doing some of my own experiments, like driving within the speed limit on Sandy at rush hour, and what I have found is that by observing the speed limit, I've actually become a hazard because of the number of people weaving in and around me because they're in a big rush to get to the stoplight ahead of me. I mean, it's just nuts. And the other thing I just wanted to ask you is, to the extent we're still encouraging people to ride their bikes on high-traffic roads, and we've gone ahead and put in a dedicated bike lane, not with a barrier, but we put in a dedicated bike lane, and we've gone even further in some instances, and there's no parking between the bike lane and the sidewalk. So in some ways, it's one of the safest routes on a high-traffic. Are we doing a good enough job enforcing the law to prevent people from blocking those lanes? And do people understand the consequences of delivery trucks, cars, tow trucks, and all the other hazards that routinely block those streets, putting people back into traffic? And do you have any thoughts about what we can do about that?
I think that our Police Bureau is doing a phenomenal job with traffic enforcement with the resources that they have. Can we do a better job? Absolutely, we all could. We need to focus more energy on educating and encouraging people about the consequences of blocking a bike lane or pushing a pedestrian into the street or a bike into a lane of traffic on a very high-speed network. You know, things that we're doing internally, we are working on a requirement for development that's, I call it a "public inconvenience fee." So if you have a development going up and they're going to block the entire sidewalk, they're going to have to be adequate signage, like a block before you get there, letting you know when you come along that intersection, you're not going to suddenly be dumped into traffic and trying to figure out how to navigate an intersection or that block when there's a development going up. People who are walking, people who are on bicycles should be given equal consideration to cars when we're impeding the right-of-way. So those are things that we're looking at internally, but we also need to do great public outreach on the impacts of a whole bunch of different users in a really complex system. And so we are building up, we're focusing on our neighborhood Greenway Network, and we're also focusing on putting in protected cycle tracks wherever we can, but we also need to do a better job at wayfinding signage. When I moved here, I get around everywhere by bike, I couldn't figure out how to access our Greenway Network. And that's something that we can do that's low-cost and easy solutions, developing apps on phones. We do everything on maps, and the truth is, I don't ride my bike around with a map in my hand, and most people don't. So we need to do better work at doing signage in the roadway, technology solutions, and educating all users about how the system works for them. Thank you for the question, I appreciate it.
Commissioner Fish, one addition to your first question, I'm really supporting this idea of this being a big tent in terms of Vision Zero and lots of different groups needing to work together, and I just want to toss out the idea of Families First, Safer Powell, which has just sprung up. It's a grassroots group that involves Cleveland High School, the adjacent neighborhood associations. There are things like this sort of popping up across the city. There are things like this sort of popping up across the city, and it's, I think the challenge will be for P-Bot to be able to keep track of them and respond to them and, you know, help them gain momentum. But it's, again, a group of people, and we previously had the owner of Hopworks come forward after a pedestrian fatality on Powell, trying to convene a meeting and work with neighbors to see what we could do to raise people's awareness and do more to, you know, get people to behave. And it's a, you know, it's, it's not that there are easy answers, but there are lots of people out there that are willing, I think, to join the, the effort if we can just find ways to coordinate and learn from each other.
Regarding that Vision Zero measure, it's a little bit of a technical question, but my understanding there's, there's a lag in terms of the data, up to two years, and I think the data comes from the state, is that right? And it is such an important measure, as Commissioner Fish mentioned, is there a way to speed up our ability to get that data so we can be seeing the results more quickly?
There's not an ability to speed up the data, but there is an ability to change the source where we get it from, which is what we're working on. So we're working with Fire and Rescue to look at transports, right? So they keep track of when anybody is transported from a location. And we're also trying to work with the local hospitals to get, what do you call it when you enter the hospital? They're...
Permission.
Thank you. Such a complicated word. Yeah, so we're working with them to try to change our data sources so we have real-time current information while we're waiting for the state's certified data to come to us.
Frida, please.
Because I'm new, I have lots of questions. Anyway, first, you're mentioning about the streets in poor or very poor condition. Does that include the unpaved streets and lack of sidewalks?
It does not. We only classify the streets we maintain.
Okay, so does it include the lack of sidewalks if there's a street paved?
It does not.
Okay, so the, the number really is a lot higher. Okay, because East Portland has a lot. I do want to compliment P-Bot for its work on the East Portland in Motion Plan and the work that's been done out there and the grants that have gotten for our safe routes to school. There's still a lot more needed, but I do appreciate the work they've had done so far. You also mentioned affordable housing and access within 500 feet. What do you define affordable housing? There's two types. I've been co-chair of the East Portland Action Plan's Housing. So we, we call it by design and by accident.
Yeah, I'm just saying, this is Margie Broadway.
Hi, and I believe you are referring to the reference for bike-share stations. We, we got the low-income housing information from the Portland Housing Agency, and they used, I believe, the most liberal definition of the term. I'm not as familiar. Does that, does that answer your question?
It's probably by design. That's usually what they take. East Portland has affordable housing throughout, hold 122nd is affordable housing by definitions of what they pay, but not who handles it. The other thing is, you're looking at youth passes, and this is a contentious issue in East Portland because PPS is the only one that has chosen to not provide busing and therefore use the local Trimate system. They actually have a special exemption from the state because buses require certain federal guidelines and structure. None of our city buses meet any of those guidelines. I used to work for Bus Cup, New Sold them, so I learned a lot about this. We just recently, last week, had a report, a presentation by Opel for their youth wanting bus passes in East Portland. We have the largest concentration of immigrants and low income. They're, they're pushing very hard. If this is considered funding, and I know sometimes the cuts are made and then the mayor puts it back in, there's a lot of political pressure. This is a political issue. We would like this year that Park Rose and Douglas be considered since we have the largest group that needs it, as well as the fact that the students, even though we provide busing, as one student reported at the last meeting, if you miss your bus, you might have to walk for almost an hour and a half or more to get to school on unsafe streets because we lack sidewalks and, and streets in our area. So I'd really like to see that where some equity comes in. Also, you mentioned doing a report on connectivity in East Portland. You mentioned two sites. What are the two sites?
Art Pierce.
We'll go through a process to select them, but one of the ones we, the ones we're probably going to look at would be Jade and Monavilla.
Okay, so you're, I wanted to make sure you weren't necessarily looking at Gateway because I worked on a street plan for connectivity for Central Gateway several years ago.
We already have one for Gateway. So those are the two that came from BPS in terms of drawing centers and the top plan. So those are the ones we might target, but we want to have a process to select them.
No, I just want, because that's the regional center there, and I want to make sure we weren't, the city has a habit of redoing and redoing and redoing. So I wanted to make sure that wasn't redone when a lot of work was put in, including with P-Bot representatives. Okay, thank you.
Comments, Rob?
Yeah, just sort of stepping back and looking at the 10,000-foot view for a minute. In reviewing this material, it looks like should the voters pass the gas tax in May, it won't have a significant impact on the, or a major impact anyway, on the, on the major maintenance that needs to be done over the next few years. Is that assessment correct or incorrect?
It'll have a significant impact. It's a fraction of what we need. It'll be a dramatic improvement over the past 30 years during which the city has neglected this problem, will it get worse?
I just worry that the taxpayers who are going to be voting on that measure may be thinking that they're getting a lot more for their money than they're getting on.
Well, we've said repeatedly that this is not everything we need. This is a starch. People will see work being done, and they will see streets being repaved, they will see flashing beacons being installed, they'll see improvements at dangerous intersections and filling in sidewalk gaps along routes to school. So people will see that we're making good use of the money. We will continue to push the legislature for additional funding. We will continue to press the federal government for additional funding. But this last year, the citizens of Seattle approved a dramatic expansion of a property tax measure for transportation that followed on a measure they passed, I think, five years before. They passed a measure which didn't give them enough money. They saw results, they approved an expansion. I'm not saying that means we're going to propose a much higher gas tax in four years. It may be that there's other revenue sources that will seem more appropriate then as the gas tax becomes less reliable. But I think that doing something is better than doing nothing, and once we've demonstrated that we can do something well, I think the voters might be receptive to future requests.
Thank you. First, I just want to compliment Transportation and Leah and her staff for making my job easier for sitting here and really highlighting some of the equity implications in, in their budget, and Director Bate before this. Just, you used, obviously, the contentiousness about the bus passes. Just a general question, have you had conversations with PPS? And is it at all realistic to expect that they're going to participate in funding any of those bus passes? Should they be cut?
I have not, and I don't think my staff has either, so...
Okay. And how many students do you know, how many students this impacts?
All Portland, yeah. Portland Public School, high school students.
Okay. And in terms of the street plan connectivity, do you, what's, do you or what is the positive impact you see on the displacement pressures in the area and/or housing issues as, as we improve aspects of connectivity to and around transportation districts?
Well, so the connectivity is really going to be addressing the built infrastructure as it goes in. So East Portland has traditionally got some of the worst conditions for pedestrians and cyclists. So as new development goes in, it will ensure that the grid pattern of the transportation system is built, is built with first pedestrians in mind and then cyclists. So there is a safe infrastructure built. Could that answer your question? Okay. And could I just chime in also? We do have the youth bus pass as one of the top issues we've identified in our strategic work plan for the back just last month. Also, the idea of a look at gentrification and displacement issues play out and what P-Bot should be doing in concert with the rest of the city on those. So these are top items for the Bureau Advisory Committee.
And a final thought, I guess, is that, you know, racial equity investments anymore have become attractive to philanthropists like Meyer Memorial Trust and, you know, Oregon Community Foundation, who are focusing on their giving based on an equity lens and evaluation. So if that's maybe something to consider.
Maybe a moment to cue up Mr. Henderson about what happened last weekend, because a big part of our proposal to the federal government in the Smart Cities Challenge is about equity.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I think a couple of comments there. One to Andrew's question earlier about how do we get better data on Vision Zero, some of the investments that would be made in the infrastructure, some of the nodes that we would have, so we would see sort of the levels of activity, the connected and autonomous vehicles would be able to send us real-time data that we'd be able to analyze much more effectively. To your question, Secretary Fox and certainly President Obama have made it clear that they see transportation as a nexus for people in the equity conversation, that they want to see these investments for the city. So the 78 cities that prepared, that proposed plans for what they would, oh, okay, that proposed plans for what they would do with the $40 million from USDOT and the additional 10 had a huge equity component. Mayor Hales did a wonderful job, as well as the other six mayors describing the challenge that faced their cities, but also the opportunities and particularly the investments that the city of Portland has and how we'd be able to further leverage that money to make that a reality for people here in the city.
Please.
And this is, I'm coming with my East Portland Action Plan app because the additional funding, one-time funding, I believe, was 50% was for infrastructure. And I'm hearing a lot of rumble and people within East Portland because that list that you've chosen does not include really anything significant, 25% of the population's out there for East Portland. What was your highest priority in your matrix, you know, your criteria, I should say, to select the projects you selected? Because I can argue that this is why East Portland isn't getting 25%.
So there are a number of criteria, and I'm going to let...
You know what, let me, let me ask actually that you, that you take this one outside.
Yeah.
Because I do want to get office government relations in.
We will send around the criteria. There are different criteria in terms of risk and, and equity is one of those criteria as well, but I'll send those around to the group.
Okay, and one compliment on your Vision Zero, the flashers? Just because I see it, I see the value of them, that I'm between Stark and Division, and the high school has significant workers, and wouldn't believe those high schoolers are actually using them. Whereas I used to see them cutting across Stark all the time. Now, if I'm going out at that time, I might see 30 or 40 kids crossing at the flasher with it working at one time. So they are working, and I get a lot of compliments of them.
That's great.
Just on the prioritization, Frida, what doesn't show up is the system development charge money. And so system development charge can only be used for new stuff. The 50% set aside is only for old stuff, since East Portland doesn't have as much old stuff to fix. It gets a lot more of the system development charges and not as much of the fixing stuff.
And that's what I need when I go back to respond to people. That is, to me, is acceptable, working on improvements in maintenance in our school district. That's an acceptable way to look at it.
We'll get you that information. Okay, Commissioner Novick, closing comments, and then we'll move on.
I just wanted to, thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to hit three things. One is that CBO has recommended $1.8 million in one-time general fund for P-Bot. I am concerned that some of the folks who are supporting the gas tax proposal, who did so sort of with the assumption that the city is going to continue to invest significant general fund in P-Bot, are going to be concerned about that and have something of a conflict because the biggest project competing with us is the data center project, which Carmen has told me repeatedly is essential. But if we do get additional one-time revenues, I hope that we will be able to tell the community that we're dedicating some to P-Bot. Second, on the Vision Zero education point, Commissioner Fish mentioned, today's Portland Tribune has an article about people complaining about the safety improvements we're making on Foster Road because they will increase some people's trips by three minutes during peak periods. And the message I'm delivering, that I hope the rest of the council can help deliver to that community, is we recognize that three minutes added to your commute is annoying. I don't trivialize that. But it will make it safer for kids at Arlita Elementary School to walk and bike to school. So I'm asking people to see those three minutes as an investment in the safety of children. Third thing is, CBO did not recommend our ask for Southwest Corridor. The importance of that is that if we don't get our work on the Southwest Corridor high-capacity transit funded, we won't be part of the discussions as to what that project looks like, and that reduces the odds of it being a project that's good for Portland.
Thank you all. Thank you very much. Good job. We'll take our next presentation right away for two reasons. One, we're just a few minutes beyond our schedule, and two, we're going to be without Martha for a little while after today. So it's now or not soon. Thank you. Take it away.
Good morning, Mayor, Commissioners, Auditor, and Budget Committee members. For the record, I'm Martha Pellegrino, and I'm the Director of Government Relations. With me today is Deanna D'Souza, a member of our Budget Advisory Committee. I'd like to begin just by thanking the two other volunteer members of our Budget Advisory Committee, and that's Mark Landauer and David Salero Owens. And I'd also like to acknowledge the good work of our Budget Analyst Doug Lee for his technical assistance on this budget request. So our presentation today is mercifully brief, and I will begin by just giving a quick overview, talk about some significant issues, turn things over to Deanna to briefly touch on our decision packages, and then touch on key performance measures, and we're going to do that in five minutes. So the mission of the Office of Government Relations is to advance the city of Portland's legislative and intergovernmental policy objectives. The office provides effective representation, strategic advice, and quality service to the city council and all city bureaus. We also developed our very first vision statement this year, and if you'll indulge me, I would like to share that with you. The vision of the Office of Government Relations is to be the premier public government relations office in Oregon, known for professional excellence, innovative solutions, the highest ethical standards, and a strong commitment to equity. There are three significant issues that are likely to impact the Office of Government Relations over the next five years. First, state lobbying. The office will need to maintain a strong focus on advancing council's priorities at the state legislature. Portland was very successful in both the 2015 and 2016 legislative sessions. In fact, we managed to pass every single bill that we introduced. Coming in 2017, we expect transportation funding will be one of the biggest, if not the biggest, issue facing the state legislature. Housing and homelessness will likely remain a top priority for the city and our legislative agendas for the foreseeable future. And other issues like air quality, emergency preparedness, climate change, PERS, and tax reform will also require a high degree of engagement from the city. And in order to meet these challenges, we may need to explore additional resources for this program in the future. Secondly, is our strategic plan. And over the last six months, the Office of Government Relations developed our first-ever five-year strategic plan. And the plan specifically addresses the office's goals for effective advocacy, customer service, international relations, and advancing equity. And like everything we do, the plan is ambitious, and it specifies our priorities in each of the program areas. But rather than going into detail today, I'd be happy to make that plan available to the committee and to the Budget Office at your request. Lastly is workload. And in the next five years, one of the major issues that we will need to address as an office is an evaluation of staff workload. It's not unusual for program staff in my office to work 50 to 70 hours a week, and these schedules are simply not sustainable over a long period of time. I'm concerned that if we do not address these as an organization, it will be difficult to recruit and retain highly qualified staff. So at this point, I'd like to turn things over to Deanna to touch on decision packages.
Good morning, Mayor Hill, City Commissioners, and Budget Committee members. For the record, my name is Deanna D'Souza, and this is my first year serving on the Office of Government Relations Budget Advisory Committee. I'm pleased to have the opportunity to appear before you today. I'm here to briefly present the recommendations on the decision package and the requested budget. The committee understood that each bureau was asked to submit 5% cut packages this year, and for the Office of Government Relations, that amounts to just over $70,000. This cut would primarily, primarily impact the office's core services in two ways. First, it would require eliminating the Portland State Hatfield Fellow position that was funded last year with ongoing resources. This position serves an important role in supporting the city's legislative relations program. Second, the reduction package would require... Second, the reduction package would require a cut to interim legislative outreach, travel to Washington, DC to lobby for Portland's federal priorities, employee continuing educational and professional development, and supplies to the international relations program. Of these cuts, the committee recommended a package that restores funding to the Hatfield Fellow. This position added much-needed capacity to the international relations program, which is currently staffed by one FTE. It also, it is also a position that helps to advance the office's equity goals. On behalf of the BAC, we appreciate the difficult decision you have ahead, and again, appreciate the opportunity to present to you. I'll now turn it back to Martha.
Thank you, Deanna. Regarding key performance measures, we've discussed in prior budget years that it's particularly difficult to apply key performance measures to the Office of Government Relations since there are many variables that influence either the relative success or failure of any particular legislative effort, and we have a number of moving parts. Having said that, we've worked really hard with the Budget Office to come up with three key performance measures. Two of them are tied to annual customer service surveys that we give to our customers at the city. The other is tied to the number of international delegations that we receive, and that's related to how Portland can make, can make the city a more welcoming international city. So we expect that if funding is not, our funding is cut for the International Relations Fellow, we won't be able to meet the target in that particular performance measure. We, there were a couple of adjustments, and I assume that Doug will touch on this, to inter-agency agreements right at the point that we were submitting our budget. And so I'll conclude by saying that the recommendation of the Budget Office, which is to take a $35,000 cut as opposed to a $70,000 cut, would basically allow the office to meet its performance targets and goals for the coming year. So with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Yes, well, opportunity to weigh in.
Hi, Doug Lee, City Budget Office. A key decision for the Office of Government Relations is the funding for the Hatfield Fellow to support the international relations program. Based on the office's financial situation and key performance measure, we believe that OGR would require a funding for this position to achieve the performance projected in 2016 to 17. As a result, the funding for this position is recommended.
Thank you. All right, questions?
I just wanted to take this opportunity, having spent a lot of the special session, the annual session, what do they call it now, down in Salem, and having a chance to observe our government relations team in action, and I think you've all heard this from legislators, we are universally commended for the quality of the staff of our Government Relations Office. Legislators on both sides of the aisle are always complimenting us. And, you know, I've seen them in action, and they are very highly self-directed worker bees down in Salem. Once you get there, they're just all going every which way, but getting a lot done. And I think, you know, getting this inclusionary housing legislation passed in a form that we could support, and it wasn't always in a form we could support, was truly miraculous. And I do want to personally acknowledge Martha's hard work in making that a reality. She, she did things, I still don't even know how she did them, but, and got people to ally and make alliances and get things done. So I just want to say, you've done a great job, and we'll miss you in the three months, but we'll look forward to having you back. Nice and fresh.
Thank you very much, Commissioner. That's, it's really great feedback. I would say that even the short sessions are still very special in their own right. Trying to legislate anything in 32 days is really quite something to behold. And I really would like to extend your appreciation to the rest of my team because there are, we are an office with eight FTE, and yet we run much more like a private lobbying firm out of City Hall. It really is a privilege to do this work and to work on these priorities. So thank you.
Martha, because the Hatfield Fellow grant looms large in our discussion, could you just remind us what the program is? What's the value we get for the $35,000 and any, any way to sort of put that in context?
Thank you, Commissioner Fish. So I'd be happy to do that. The Hatfield Fellow is a program whereby we get a really amazing staff member vetted through Portland State University for eight months. And as resources go, if we were to hire a full-time staff member to do the same work, it would probably cost us two to three times as much. The Hatfield Fellow we have now is Cheeto Delaue, and Cheeto's actually here. If you'll just wait. Cheeto was actually involved in the Portland and Mutari Sister City Association before she came and worked as our International Relations Fellow. And so she brings a background in understanding, deeply understanding, our sister city relationships. So she has been supporting the International Relations Director. She developed the very first International Relations newsletter that frankly, I think we've ever had, and she really has been driving that. Yesterday, our International Relations Director was out sick, and so Cheeto took the lead on welcoming a student delegation from Sapporo High School here. And so what the International Relations Fellow does is, we expect 90 to 100 international delegations coming through City Hall on an annual basis. And when you consider what that means for international exchanges, economic development opportunities, and otherwise for the city, I think what the Hatfield Fellow allows us to do is with, provide a great educational experience, but also make a smart use of city resources and how we, and how we kind of use that position to integrate that.
And Martha, just remind us, over the eight months, how many hours a week do you get?
So it's a four-day-a-week program. In fact, that, so it's a Monday-through-Thursday program. And in fact, Cheeto's been so successful in our office, we've asked her to stay on part-time through the Rose Festival, because as you know, the Rose Festival for Portland is our premier time, and we really highlight our cultural connections with other cities. So we're excited to have Cheeto stay on for a couple more months.
Mayor, I move that we now reconvene as the Budget Committee and take care of this right now. Let's end the suspense.
Take that motion at the appropriate time.
I think we do it by unanimous consent.
Nice try. All right. Anyone else, please?
Martha, there's a project that I unfortunately was not able to complete by the end of the session as a tribute to you, but I'm working on it now, and maybe we can get it done for your turn. I've contacted Cool and the Gang to ask them to rewrite their classic song, "Celebration", and they've got just one lyric so far. It's "Pellegration Time, Come on, let's pellegrate. We're going to have some good laws tonight. Let's pellegrate, it's all right," et cetera. Hopefully, we'll have that completed in a few months.
So again, bon voyage, and thank you for all of your good work within the office. I would be interested, when you get back, to have a discussion of, clearly during this session, both the short session and the long session, your staff are working probably more than 70 hours a week. It's very impressive. How do you manage the seasonality of the work that you do, and how do, how could we provide support at the appropriate times? Not for this budget, I appreciate the Budget Office's recommendations on this, but when you, it's an ongoing discussion.
And thank you. First of all, thank you, Commissioner Novak, for the song, and Commissioner Fritz, I would welcome that discussion. And I, I've really appreciated your leadership on ways to make, to really balance work and life, and that's something that I think it's maybe the Office of Government Relations is a little behind the curve on that, so I welcome that, that discussion.
With this last legislative session with the housing, and I co-chair East Portland Action Plan's Housing Subcommittee, I think in the future, because a lot of your legislative requests align with East Portland Action Plan's strategies, we're a group of over, probably over 100 advocates out there, that in housing, we did a lot of advocacy this last session directly with legislators, especially these Portland representatives that we know personally. So if you could keep us in the loop, when you're starting to advocate, I'm sure, I know I sent a lot of emails, we can advocate right along with you in alignment and add a community voice to the city's voice.
Thank you so much for that comment. And one thing I will say is, whether you knew it or not, we were absolutely aligned, and we really relied heavily on the East Portland Action Plan and East Portland members, especially on inclusionary zoning. Commissioner Saltzman made a number of calls at really key points of the legislative session. And I would say, without the really strong push from members of the East Portland Action Plan, I'm not sure we would have been successful. So our coordination was often through the council offices, but the support EPAT of community organizations like ERCO was very active, Apana was very active, Opel was very active, and we were really grateful for the large coalition that came together to pass it. But I really do appreciate a number of East Portland leaders who stepped up in this legislative session to lobby for these bills. Thank you.
I just want to thank Martha and her staff, certainly, because they've always been so very responsive to, to my staff as things arise, and is always reaching out to the office just to kind of take a look at equity implications of what they're doing and how things may be rolling out in Salem. So I just want to thank you for your staff and yourself.
Good to hear. Any other comments? Thank you all very much. In addition to being musically appropriate, Martha once informed me that the root word of her name comes from the word for pilgrim. So we wish you a great pilgrimage for the next three months, and we'll see you when you get back. Bon voyage.
Great, thank you.
We convene again on Thursday for Public Safety Day, so.